Welcome. I'd like to call to order our City Council Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October 18th to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving to item three, public comment. This is an area reserved. Anybody that would like to speak on any item that's not on this evening's agenda would be welcome to do so now. Any public comment? Okay. Moving to new--
Do we have a need to report out of closed session?
Okay. Let's go-- I'm sorry, let me just back up. Any report, Mr. Rubens, our city attorney, on closed session?
There's no report tonight from closed session.
Great, okay. So moving on to new business, let me give you a little overview. There's actually three items we're going to be talking about and in order. The first, of course, is a discussion of a consultant's report on fire and emergency services. Second, which will be 4B, will be looking at the formalization of approval of a request for proposal on the delivery of fire services. And 4C will be the update of the dissolution process with the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department. And that's actually the entire meeting. So it sounds short on the agenda, but I'm sure we'll have a lively discussion and a lot of learning, which is the purpose of this evening, is to learn a lot about-- this is our first review, study session review, whatever you want to call it, of options and information on providing fire services for the city of San Carlos. So with that, 4A, do we have a staff report first, or Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Mayor, before we begin on this item, I'm going to have to recuse myself on the three agenda items you just mentioned tonight. Our office represents the city of Belmont and the city of San Carlos, and since both agencies are interested in this, I've already notified the city that I will not be participating in the discussion or advice on this.
Okay. Mr. Rubens, thank you very much. So again, the process will be-- it will stay flexible, but what I think we'll be doing is, of course, there'll be a staff report, I think both from our city staff and the consultants. Second, we'll open up for City Council to ask questions, clarifications of the staff report and the consultant's report. And then, third, we will open it up for public comment. Now, it'll be your chance, any questions you have, any comments, anything you want to talk about fire, we welcome you to do this evening. We would like to hear. So with that, City Manager, Mr. Malby, welcome. Welcome to your own home here.
Yes, thank you very much. Just like to make a few opening comments before we get into the more of the meat of what's on this evening's agenda. I'd like to begin with a little bit of background for those that are just joining us on this issue. For the last 10 years, the city of San Carlos has dealt with a systemic budget deficit issue. Each and every year of the last 10 years, the City Council has adopted a balanced budget, but it has required fairly significant reductions in services across the board. Those cuts were made in police, in fire, in parks and recreation, city administration, and in all those areas. As we know, two years ago, the economy went into a very quick and severe recession, and the city of San Carlos, along with just about every other city across the country, was faced with large budget deficits. After having gone so many years cutting and reducing the budget in what you might call a typical municipal budget cut kind of approach, we were faced with a $3.5 million budget deficit that required some new approaches. And so we were forced to deal with looking at how to change some of the service delivery models of our local government here in San Carlos. And about December of last year, the City Council, after the failure of Measure U, which was the half-cent sales tax that was on the ballot before the San Carlos voters, once that failed, the council came together and started to talk about what direction to go with it to provide city services. And the council asked the staff to begin to pursue options related to regionalism, outsourcing, and consolidation of municipal services with other entities and possible providers, including the private sector, I might add. And so, over the last year, we've taken a number of steps. We've outsourced our payroll function to the private sector. We've outsourced our parks maintenance function to the private sector. And most recently, we have entered into a contract arrangement with the San Mateo County Sheriff's Department to provide police services to this community. In addition, about six months ago, the City Council sent a letter acknowledging that they would like to dissolve the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department to begin what is an 18-month clock going that would have the fire department end in October 12th of 2011. In addition to those two items, the council has been working with staff and their-- and the city labor groups to make significant reductions in salary and benefits. And it's these approaches in these three areas that the council identified for coming up with how to change the service delivery model here in San Carlos. Now, change for local government isn't something that comes easy, just government in general. You know, often in these times, even the public and certainly state and federal elected officials would like to say, you know, "Government needs to change. We need to change this. We need to change that." But what we're really talking about at the end of the day are a few very essential city services that we provide the public. And as we begin to discuss the options available to us this evening, I'd like all of us to keep in the back of our mind, whether we sit on the dais, we're in the community, whether we're a staff member of this agency or any other agency, that we share a lot of common ground. We all believe that fire service is essential, that emergency medical service is essential, that police services are essential, that the planning and building and other services that the city provides are essential, that we really, at this point, are only providing essential services to the community, the services that the community wants. And one common goal that we've had in all these discussions at the staff level, and I know that the council has shared this goal, one common goal has been, how do we, as we look at the options available to us for changing these services, identify options that will either maintain or improve our public service levels to this community and, at the same time, reduce costs? Now, I mean, some people may feel like that that's a goal or an objective that's out of reach, but when it comes to payroll, when it comes to parks maintenance, when it comes to police services, we have met that objective as we've entered into new service arrangements. We have increased the service to this community and found ways to lower the cost. So it can be done, and we need to continue to look for opportunities to do that going forward. So just to begin to wrap up here, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the staff here in San Carlos, in particular Brian Moore, who's been our project lead on this, Doug Frye, our fire chief, the staff at the JPA, the staff in Belmont, Redwood City, San Mateo, Menlo Fire Protection District, CAL FIRE, all those folks who have worked with our consultant to help put together the report that's before you on fire services tonight. But most importantly, I think it's important that we acknowledge and thank the firefighters and paramedics who work for the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department. We know, having gone through this with the rest of our employees, that this is a tough situation for them to be in. They've handled themselves so far with nothing but professionalism and dedication to this city, and I'd like to commend them for their efforts and their continued efforts as we explore the options for providing these services in the future. So with that, I'd like to introduce our Assistant City Manager, Brian Moore, who's going to give a quick overview of the process in terms of the study, and then we're going to bring our consultants up and get moving.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And I'll bring up our first PowerPoint of the evening. And as we start out, I'd like to echo interim manager Malby's comments. We appreciate all of the assistance that we've gotten from our in-house fire department and the neighboring fire agencies, and all of the folks that were listed in the report that we interviewed and got data from. It was quite an effort, but I think that as you read through it, you probably saw that many of the questions that have been answered-- asked over the years in the fire area have now been answered. Just to give some background on the fire service and to kind of provide a common starting point for everybody, prior to 1979, fire services in San Carlos were provided by a standalone city of San Carlos Fire Department. In 1979, the city of San Carlos, and for that matter, the city of Belmont, both reduced the number of fire stations each had from three to two, and they each joined in Joint Powers Agreement to create what was then known as the South County Fire Authority. That agreement was amended in 2006 and again in 2007, which created the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department, or also known as the BSCFD. The funding of fire services has come up in the past, most recently in a council agenda item you discussed last year. Initially, in the 1979 and 2006 JPAs, it involved a 50-50 cost-sharing formula. A year later, that was changed to a so-called four-factor formula that involved the number of calls, the number of fire companies, the population, and the assessed valuation. As this formula kicked in, it had the effect of significantly increasing the share of fire costs that the city of San Carlos paid, and it also had the effect of annually reducing the percentage of fire costs the city of Belmont paid. In San Carlos, the cost share has increased from 50% in 2006-7 to 53.4% this year. And as the council knows, as part of the budget package that we talked to you about in March, the council did agree with the staff recommendation that we freeze the San Carlos cost at $6.3 million rather than letting it increase. If you had not taken that action, depending on how the numbers would have run, you could have been paying as much as $7.1 million this year. In terms of fire budget growth, over the first four years, the fire department budget has grown 19.5%. It's the fastest-growing budget in the entire city in terms of departments, and this year the budget grew another 13.1% above that. This is a five-year comparison that shows you the costs that each of the two partner agencies have paid for fire. And as I indicated earlier, you can see that the cost of the fire department paid by Belmont has dropped from 50% to 46.6% over this period, and in San Carlos, it's increased from 50% to 53.4%. This year, there's a difference of over $800,000 in terms of what the two partners pay. Turning now to the analysis of services, on April 16th, the City Council authorized staff to issue a request for proposal, an RFP, for a analysis of the fire department and also options going forward. And on June 14th, after a selection process involving six different firms, City Council approved an agreement with TriData to do this work. Last week, we released the TriData report, and tonight, our first agenda item, we're here to talk about that report. I think from the staff perspective, as I indicated earlier, I think you'll find this is a very extensive report. It is 85 pages long. It includes both the company's analysis of the current fire department and our options going forward, as well as a draft request proposal document that you will consider later tonight. The report contains what I would call a vision of the city's option for fire and emergency services after the JPA ends sometime on or before October 12th of next year. It includes 36 significant findings from the TriData firm. You will find in your packet a table that staff has prepared of those 36 findings, which we've also organized by heading to make it a little more easier for you to digest the information in the report. In terms of staff's recommendations and suggestions for your action on item one tonight, we recommend that you receive the upcoming presentation report from TriData. We suggest that in addition to taking public testimony, that you provide your questions and comments on the analysis to staff and TriData and provide any feedback and direction on this report. It is, as you can see, a draft report, and based on the questions and comments and any errata that you have and staff has, we will work with a consultant to final that report. So with that, let me bring up Steve Brezler and John Montanaro, the team from TriData, and they will run through some of the highlights of their report.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Gentlemen, welcome to San Carlos.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of council, before we get started, I'll introduce myself, Stephen Brezler. I am the senior program manager for SPC TriData and was the project manager for this particular effort. With me is John Montanaro, John Hales from this area, and he's our senior consultant based here in California. As we discussed the project, I would act open by saying that, kind of echo what has been said already, is that we received a lot of excellent cooperation from everyone committed to making this process a good one, one that ultimately would lead to ideas and future directions on how to provide the citizens of San Carlos safe, effective, efficient emergency services. So I think that for the council, it can be proud of the way that all the individuals interacted with the project team in what was a very, very challenging study. The second thing is that, to a person, that certainly there were many ideals about dissolution and individual opinions about, you know, what should happen, what might happen, what's best, certainly from that particular individual's point of view. But I think that it's safe to report that, to a person, everyone understood that the city faces some difficult challenges, and that while there are certainly disagreements about how to meet these going forward, that almost to a person, folks really recognize the situation in terms of the financial situation faced by the city. The other thing is, the final thing I'll say before we get into the presentation, is that you will notice in our draft report that we do not make specific recommendations. As Brian mentioned, there are some key findings that we put in our report, and this is done purposefully because we felt like, in this situation, it's best that we present the information. The council has some difficult choices to make. We did not want to encumber the council by making a recommendation that, for whatever reason, going forward, they may find it necessary to go in a different direction. As I said, there will be difficult choices, so we on purpose laid out our report such that we talk about significant findings and not making specific recommendations. The study performed by us, the scope of work, was a base review in terms of the city's demand for services, the current situation projecting fire and EMS demand, emergency services going forward, and then from that base review, developing what then is the request for proposal that the city could use in terms of soliciting proposals from interested parties to provide service to the future. We reviewed data, reports, fire board minutes. We conducted two sets of intensive meetings, one site here, with various stakeholders within the city, to include fire chiefs from surrounding jurisdictions, firefighters, any number of folks involved in the process. We also then performed a GIS analysis in terms of station locations and response times. The analysis portion looked at population, demand, station location analysis, and then the second aspect was the review of services in terms of staffing. There were some key issues involved here in terms of how best to provide EMS, whether or not hazmat units should be located, staffed and located in San Carlos, what other options were available, also service sharing opportunities and cost. This was the key components of the review that we did. As I go through here, feel free, and we're comfortable doing it either way, if you would like to ask questions as we proceed, Mayor. I'll let you be the arbiter there, or if you prefer to wait till the end, we're comfortable doing either.
Yeah, I just go ahead and proceed. We're used to writing things down and asking them all at once, so go ahead.
Okay, fine. We did do a population and risk demand analysis. We met with the planning folks. We reviewed data, both online. One of the things, the good news for San Carlos is that small increases in population are projected. There's little development taking place, the city's boundaries. There's not a lot of land to develop going forward. This is good news because, as you see in our report, we're essentially projecting very moderate increases in demand on any number of the incident types. Even with some increases in demand, they would fall well within the reasonable capabilities of the current-- of stations that are already located in San Carlos, such that the city does not really need to look at options which greatly expands the resources available on both the fire side and the EMS side. EMS demand, even currently, is 54% of the other demand for services. I would tell you that this stacks up as compared to other jurisdictions, slightly below what we would find in other locales, where EMS demand can be upwards of 70, 75, even 80% of demand. So in that regard, it is the most prevalent demand for firefighters and first responders, and yet it's kind of on the low end of what one might expect to find.
And you might note, that's not to say, under your current system right now, you'll have use, you'll have a higher loss or a higher number of calls, or if you make changes, that you might have a lower number of calls. That's a risk, and it's hard to say what will happen from year to year, given the steady population.
At its current operational tempo, for the calls in San Carlos, when we did the analysis, we wanted to look at the calls in Belmont-St. Carlos Fire District, Fire Department's area, and then we wanted to segregate those calls that were just within the city of San Carlos. You'll notice in the report, we do look at it two different ways. I can tell you, one of the significant findings is that data collection is not particularly good in the fire department. We had a lot of difficulty getting good data. The data that we were able to get primarily was incident data from the county's 911 system. We attempted then to match this up with local data on the National Fire Incident Reporting System, which is the national reporting system that the fire department uses, to actually document the type of incident that they went to, you know, how many personnel were there, the type of incident that it was, and the actual incident outcome. The collection of that data is not good. We had significant issues matching up the data from the 911 center to that of the ENFOR system. That's the bad news. The good news, if there is some good news, is this is not uncommon. Collection of data, reporting of data, is a problem nationwide. It's not just in San Carlos. You'll notice in our report that one of our, you know, one of our comments is the fact that going forward, and any type of arrangement that the city pursues, is that this is something that the city, the council, should really insist on, that they're getting regular reports, that the city staff is getting regular reports on not just the number of calls, but, you know, what is the situation? And clearly, we had difficulty getting that kind of information from them.
One of the critical things with data that you want to look at in the future is outcomes. When you look at data, that's one thing, but what happened after you did what you did? And that's a really weak part of emergency response data right now, and that's not specific to San Carlos either.
In terms of the call volume, this is just for calls now in San Carlos, about 5.4 calls per day. So even going forward, if there was some significant jump in the number of calls that would even increase that by 20 or 30%, which is, as we said in the report, is highly unlikely, the number of calls in San Carlos could be handled, you know, by the current assets that they have available. There's low demand for fire, low fire demand and losses overall in San Carlos. From 2006 to 2009, 13 structural fires over that period, on average, per year, and 45 other fires, other fires being incipient kind of fires, outside triage fires, automobile fires, and the like. We used the incident data and we did a GIS analysis showing the incident density of EMS calls. This shows-- this is a four-year aggregate data, and shows the areas within the Belmont Fire Department's area of operations, and the black line there showing the stations in San Carlos and the hotspot areas for EMS calls. The little white area there is the unincorporated area, which actually falls within the city of San Carlos. The same for the fire density analysis, showing the hotspots for those particular areas. So the good news is, in terms of station locations, I'll get into that in a minute, are quite good in terms of not just locating stations to meet some, you know, standard of response, but also that, you know, the one station in San Carlos is really in the hotspot area. In terms of a station location analysis, which we performed, we looked at a four-minute travel time 90% of the time, and this is a goal that I will tell you, and I've done probably in the last 10 years, I've done probably almost 50 major studies, and in addition, other studies that we've done on our shop, there are few cities that are able to meet the standard. But overall, San Carlos, for the reporting years that we had information, and we believed the information to be correct, that at five minutes and eight seconds, at 90%, and four minutes and 17 seconds, at 80%. So the standard of response being at 90%, you're saying, we're going to get the 90% of the calls within our standard, is very difficult, as I said, for communities to meet. And every community should not want to necessarily meet the high standard. And the reason is because all calls are not created equal. The key is to try to get to more of the emergencies faster. There are also areas of the city where you have lower resp's, so that trying to meet a standard of 90% response time becomes more difficult, you know, of a challenge to meet. So even at 80%, it can be very acceptable, depending upon the demand in various areas of the city. Location of the current stations is excellent, so when you saw the maps there, when we first began to look at the situation, we kind of looked at the layout of the city, understanding, you know, where, you know, the main three fires were, the location of Station 13, more toward the eastern boundary, you know, we were not certainly sure that that was a great location, but when you're looking at where the incidents are occurring, it is, in fact, a very good location. This particular GIS map shows the response travel times from the two stations in San Carlos, Station 13, Station 16, and less than four minutes and less than eight minutes. The four minutes is the standard for a first-arriving unit at a structural fire. The eight minutes is a national standard for the arrival of the full first-line assignment. When you look at the coverage area of the two stations in San Carlos, you can see that only on its western boundary and some areas up towards Belmont, or towards Station 15, is not being covered within four minutes. Again, that is using the strict definition of meeting a 90th percentile travel time. So-- So overall, the coverage of the two stations and within the city is excellent. The question then becomes, are the right resources in those stations going forward? And that's, we'll discuss that. Couple of things about the station location analysis. We were also asked to look at whether or not the station, the city could be served by one fire station or one facility, and we determined that it could not be. Even if this new station were built, that there are some areas, gaps that could not be covered. The exception being, if there were one station, and John, if you'll check on the location, built at a particular site and CAL FIRE, an agreement with CAL FIRE Station 18 were reached, then the coverage area becomes better, but still not great. The problem with that is, most of the incidents then that fall in those outlier areas are not within a good response time from Station 18, coming this way.
If I may, I help you out there. That was at Cordillares in Valumia, I believe.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. We determined that there is an overlap of coverage with four Redwood City's fire stations on the western border. I would, I would say to the council and to the group that when we initially began the study, and our scope of work was specifically for the city of San Carlos. So as we began the study and we began to look at the, the issues involved and the opportunities involved, is when we really came upon the possibility of some service sharing potential. So what we've done is look at those opportunities within the context of our study. And to even go further would require us to kind of broaden the scope of work, if you will, to look even more in depth with Redwood City, with County Fire, and others. But we did determine that there's an overlap of coverage with Redwood City stations, and that there's an opportunity to share Station 16 with CAL FIRE, Redwood City. The final point, and kind of following up with the remark I just made, is that really before proceeding with some kind of a permanent or almost permanent arrangement with Redwood City, we did not do a full data analysis of Redwood City's demand. We know that, you know, which stations tend to have the highest demand. We know what the demand is for Station 16 and the capacity there to handle more, more calls than it currently handles. What we don't know is, how many more calls would that generate if there was some kind of partnership with Redwood City and even with County Fire? So we, there should be a, a demand analysis, could be conducted very quickly if there's interest on, you know, another government's entities, on their interest in pursuing this option. That study should be, should be conducted. And the other follow-up comment to that is that for them, for their council, for their decision-makers, they would have many issues to consider, just as this council does. So we, we put it in there, we looked at it, the opportunity exists. Certainly, some more work would need to be done before a final decision were made. This is looking at the travel time, the GIS mapping, showing the, again, the less than four minutes and less than eight minutes. This is a scenario if Station 16 were in fact the facility being used, and Station 12 in Redwood City shared those resources, whatever they be, might be at Station 16. The other key questions that we were asked to look at are the ladder truck currently stationed in San Carlos, Station 13, and the hazmat unit, which is the county's hazmat unit based here in San Carlos. There are a few hazmat calls, we were able to get the data from the county on those, and there are true, certainly as you saw before, there are a few structure fires in San Carlos. There were major considerations in the, in the study. As you will see in our report, in our opinion, a better approach instead of a ladder truck is a quint or an engine, is Station 13 for a variety of reasons. Number one being flexibility, the second for, you know, water application, not just having, you know, the aerial ladder availability, which based on the information that we were able to gather, is not used a lot, you know, within the city of San Carlos. So, you know, one of the options is, is to trade an engine or a rescue response for a ladder response, and some of these options will be played out depending upon the proposals, the various proposals received from, from folks submitting such. There's certainly going to be a decision that has to be made as to whether to continue providing, to being the hazmat provider, and that should certainly make sure that there is a full cost recovery. There's some question as to whether or not that full cost recovery is in fact taking place now. Again, we were asked to look at the operational aspects of, of it. We did, we did see some of the financial information from the hazmat budget, but the question, there is question as to whether or not 100% of the costs are being covered. The other question that the council will have to, you know, as proposals are received and options are vetted in terms of hazmat is, it is an essential county service. The county is being well-served by having a single focal point for its hazmat services. The Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department, you know, has a, has an excellent system. Certainly, the question is whether or not, you know, this is the correct location for it. So even if the cost issues are considered, one of the things that will have to be considered is the logistics of moving the unit. And, and so if another organization is better suited, if the city decides that it does not want to continue to provide that service, for whatever reason, we think that the city should understand that there is a logistical issue of training new personnel, and ramping up that new operation will take some time to accomplish that.
That could easily take you more than a year if you wanted to transfer hazmat responsibilities outside of San Carlos under the current commitments, and that's real important to consider.
And to the county's, to the county's benefit, to the fire services' benefit, the fact that there's only one primary hazmat delivery vehicle and focus point in the county is really good. Many counties, this is one area where there's a lot of duplication of services, takes a lot of time, commitment in terms of training personnel, you know, and maintaining those important services. So in that regard, it's, the rest, the rest done is excellent.
It would be a very, very difficult thing to maintain with a two-station department. The JPA as a four-station department, I'm sure found it a struggle to maintain all of the training and certifications required. With two stations with a limited number of personnel, it's going to dramatically impact the ability to effectively do that.
I know we've covered certainly a lot of material in a very short period of time, and at this point, we'll open up the questions from council.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I think what I'd like to do, I think we all will have a handful, maybe start on my right here, Mr. Klein, and maybe if you could answer, ask maybe two or three questions, and we'll work our way left, and then we'll work our way back until all the questions are, are out.
And if there is a question that we cannot give you a specific answer for because it requires us to go back, and we will certainly get that from the council's minutes.
Sure.
And make sure that we get that back to you in writing.
Great, thank you.
So, Mr. Klein, you want to start off?
Yeah, first I have two clarifications. In your report, you put a significant finding, you talk about data a lot in this report, and I really value that. I mean, you said earlier tonight that we don't have great data, so let's say we don't have good data, but that's not uncommon in emergency services, correct?
Yes.
Now, I'm wondering why that's not uncommon. We have a police department that receives 10 times as many calls, but I can go to my police chief and go, can you give me a breakdown on calls for November 2009? And he can give me every single call, it all adds up, and what the call was. How come we can't do that for a department that receives 10 times less?
Yeah, that's, that's a, it's actually a very good question. I think it's probably cultural as much as anything. Police departments, in terms of their, in terms of their business, the way they conduct day-to-day business are much more data-driven than fire services have been. This is true nationwide, so it would not be uncommon to go into another community and find the exact same thing that you're, that you're stating here. Most communities, I mean, they certainly understand that as much as police is responding to calls, most people don't necessarily think of themselves as being, probably getting mugged tonight or some other crime happening to them. So police departments have been very, they've been very effective in driving their system based on data. Fires typically, the model has been in the past, and this is changing, this is what you're doing, is looking at, they're providing an insurance policy, the same level of coverage 24/7, because, you know, we're preparing for the eventual situation that some incident may occur. So they really didn't see the need in terms of the fire services saying, we need to have flexible staffing, we should have more resources at one time than another. Police departments have been doing that for many, many years. So I think because in many ways, maybe governments have haven't done a good, particularly good job of requiring our fire departments to do it, and fire departments, and sometimes to the fire departments, they have not had the resources available. Police departments tend to have very robust support services. There are very few police departments of any size that would not have a planning department. I can show you cities of 200,000, 400,000, 600,000 population that don't have a planning section in their fire department. Okay, so that's, you know, that's part of the problem. It's not, it's not because fire departments don't want to do it, they've not always been required to do it, they've not made decisions based on it, and quite frankly, they haven't been given the resources to do it.
One of the other reasons is a change in the way the data's collected. Over here, a couple of years ago, you used this system to collect it, and you switch systems and go to this way to collect it, and find out they don't match. And so recalling that older data becomes very difficult. And I wanted to repeat again that in the future, from what Steve was saying, you need folks who are dedicated to working the data system, writing programs where you just literally almost like push a button to get this information out, instead of looking at, oh my God, I've got to take 5,000 pieces of the data, all of this doesn't come out electronically, I've got to do it by hand. It's not relational.
Yeah, it can be a simple, we did a major project in Pittsburgh, and they were trying to track all of their incident, trying to meet the response times. And the one, the one executive support person, her job every day, and certainly Pittsburgh is much larger, was to contact the dispatch center, and they took the times from the 911 system, and she was, she basically put it into a spreadsheet. So I mean, it can, it doesn't have to be rocket science, in any number of ways it can be done.
And the current system doesn't encourage fire folks right now, working on shift after an emergency call, to sit down and to go to any great lengths to explain the impact of response time, to what was the situation encountered, and what were the benefits of what they did, and what would have changed if it were something else.
Okay, well, that leads into my other question. In this report, and I want to make sure that I'm correct on this, you don't only split up in call volume, but you also split up an hourly workload. So you have 5.4 calls a day, but you split it up with stations where the Station 16 on Lowell averages an hour, a little bit more, a little bit change workload per shift.
For calls occurring in San Carlos.
In San Carlos, that's correct. So we, that doesn't include mutual aid, but that's per 24 hours, correct?
Yes.
So if we were to double that, that's two hours per 24 hours.
Right.
And that would pretty much encompass.
Very easy, and that's why I said, there's capacity in the system to handle additional calls, but those calls outside of San Carlos have to be counted.
Yeah, so my question is, and we just heard that the system doesn't encourage the collection of data, doesn't encourage the taking the time to collect the data, but you're telling me the workload for one station is, could be, including mutual aid, two hours a day, and the other station's less than that. Why can't we collect the data then? Or why aren't we collecting the data? I mean, it shows that there is time.
Yeah, you'd have to redesign the system and set up new standards and operational policies, and lots of training, and some work with supervision.
Okay.
People have got to be trained, and they got to be dedicated and diligent to the collection of data. And so that's an organizational function and a leadership function.
Okay, and so then that brings up to my last question, and then I'll pass it off. We've had many discussions on the fire board level about the tiller truck, which I'm sure you have read the minutes on, and many times we've received different data on how often it was used. Sometimes it's seven, sometimes it's 14 or 13, and one reported it 70 times. So is this data, these 13 average calls, these 13 average structure fires, that's not concrete? That's about as close as we're going to get though, correct?
In any study, I would tell you, we can only report the data back that we're given, and we have to assume that it's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so this came from, the, the number of incident types that we're reporting there came from how the incident was reported to the 911 center. If it turned out to be something else, okay, this is the way it was reported to us.
Okay, because what I'm seeing is that you're reporting 13 structure fires, which will require the ladder, per year, and about two hazmat calls per year in San Carlos. So combined, that's 15 calls per year, is what we're averaging, out of 1,800-plus calls in general for the, for the entire city, correct?
Yes.
Okay, goes to my own questions for now.
On the data issue, I also wanted to mention to you that firefighters, there's a whole lot of non-emergency work. So that's a good comparison with the, a lot of non-emergency work time. That isn't all they do.
No, no, I know that, yeah, I know there's training and there's other things that come up, but we're talking about emergency call workload.
So the sole purpose was to get an idea of the workload in terms of their ability to handle more calls.
More calls, okay.
Okay, Mr. Klein, we'll get back to you with a few more questions.
All right, Mr. Ahmad. Thank you. Just, I wanted to read a paragraph of this report into the record. Fire Chief Frye, along with officers, firefighters, and support staff members, were extremely cooperative, gracious, and forthcoming during the project. They provided data, facilitated tours of the fire stations, and discussed the challenges and opportunities facing the organization. Without their assistance, this project would not have been completed. So for the record, I do want to acknowledge Chief Frye and the firefighters for their cooperation and for their work. It has been called out as, as good work, and I do want to thank the chief and, and your staff for cooperating exceptionally well. Generally, one thing I didn't hear from you, and I want to give you, let me ask you to limit this for one minute, I still don't know who you guys are. So why are we listening to you? What is your background to be able to help us make these decisions?
Good question. I spent, in fact, I just, on Thursday was my 40th anniversary being involved in the fire service. I actually began, as many in the business do, as a volunteer in 1967, but I became a career firefighter in Baltimore in 1970, October 14th. So I've been involved in fire and EMS for over 40 years. I've served in other capacity from step firefighter to, you know, lieutenant, captain, battalion chief, fire chief, training, fire investigation, administration. I even served a stint in a 1,000-person department as a human resources commander, which nobody will ever admit to the fact that they did something like that. So I've got a pretty wide, varied experience in emergency services, and I've been with TriData now for almost 10 years, and I'm their, their lead analyst on their, typically I do most of their large projects, more complex studies, and I do focus on metropolitan-level studies, city of Vancouver, as I mentioned, Pittsburgh, Cincinnati. So my experience is in looking at all types of emergency services, career, all career, combination, not too many volunteer services, both in Canada and United States. So I have a lot of experience, not just with one or two departments, but also nationwide.
John?
I'm pushing 46 years in the, in the fire service in terms of working
I'm pushing 46 years in the fire service, in terms of working as a fireperson, to be in a fire chief, to be in a consultant. I spent 22 years as a full-time fire chief, and over six years as an interim fire chief. And I've done lots of consulting work, and working with the development of teams, as well as analysis of the fire department itself. And it's pretty wide, broad experience, from a one-station department to volunteers, to 12-company organization, from Northern California to Southern California.
Great. Thank you. It's clear your experiences are of benefit to us. I'll try to hit just a couple of questions fairly quickly. I wanted to follow up on a statement you made. Regarding the data, one thing you said was, it sounded like reporting is rather culturally-driven, and the second thing I heard said was, it appeared that the decisions were not really being driven by the data that we've collected. If that's the case, then how are decisions made?
Like they are in many communities, they tend to be more emotional. I think, and I can say this because I am one, is that fire folks are very passionate about, you know, their job, and what they provide, and the level of service they can provide, and that is the reason that they're so effective at what they do. Sometimes, though, again, I'm pointing the finger back at myself, remembering my days, sometimes we think things are as they are. I have a saying that my son now reports, says back to me, "We know, we know, and that's what we know." And sometimes we don't get out of the box and look for other opportunities, and I will tell you, that's a struggle that the fire service is going through nationally, is that change is being thrust upon us, you know, because of, primarily because of financial issues, you know, the Great Recession. But many times, just decisions are made because that's the way we've always done them. And unfortunately, I will also say, again, I'm thinking of my own situation, many firefighters look to the large jurisdictions as kind of the goalpost, or the guidepost, if you will. On the East Coast, it's the FDNY, and if the FDNY is doing it, it probably is good for everyone, well, everybody is not in Manhattan. My guess is, probably on the West Coast, folks look to, whether it's LA, or San Francisco, or whatever, and how they do things. So, it's cultural within our organization to do that, but...
So, if I could summarize what I've heard is, which I would agree, the firefighting staff are passionate people who love their profession, and that's, those are the kind of people we want to hire, and they're also experts in this. And it sounds like a lot of intuitive thinking goes into the decision-making as opposed to data.
And you've hired them to go put out fires, do dangerous assignments and rescue. They're not data collectors necessarily, and so that administrative help needs to be rethought out to readjust the system.
No, no pushback. I think you do put this out throughout the report, and one of the issues is, given the percentage of our budget that fire protection is, it is reasonable to expect that we should have appropriate measures and validations of that to ensure that, you know, we are stewards of the public money, that it is being spent appropriately. But that stated, we are hiring firefighters to do firefighting and EMS work, so that's terrific. I'll hit one question, I'll ask for a brief response. On page two, you mentioned, a 72-hour work schedule for firefighters is not a viable alternative for San Carlos under a standalone fire department option. Can you just explain very briefly why?
Yes. The 72-hour schedule builds on a two-shift system where firefighters work overtime, so they're working 144 hours a week, there's 168, so they have to make up the difference. That difference is made up by overtime. In CAL FIRE, the system is large enough so that they can draw from many employees, so if somebody is not going to work, somebody else will. In a small system like this, it's too small to have that, to have enough people to make the system work. That's what it really comes down to.
Okay. I'll pass. Mr. Griselli?
I don't really have too many questions, but I do want to go back to Mr. Klein's point, and on page one of your executive summary, at the bottom, you indicate the workload for, you know, Station 13, one hour a day, and the workload is just under one hour. And again, I can't emphasize this enough, that is not the workload, it's not what people do, they do, and again, I know you know that, but I want to verbalize that even, emphasize it even more, inspections, outside of the area calls, maintenance, training, et cetera. This is not a sit-on-your-butt job, and someone reading this cursorily, and again, I'm not criticizing your report, but I just want to make sure that it's emphasized that these men and women work their shifts. And so, I just, you know, I can't emphasize that enough. And the other thing that you mentioned, and I agree with, you said it earlier, it's insurance. And I've said this before from the desk, and I'll say it again, our fire department is an insurance policy, and we have to have them here 24 hours a day, seven days a week, because we don't know what's going to happen. We can't predict it. It would be great if we could, and we could staff that way, but we can't. So, those are just the items that, and again, I appreciate your report and all the folks that, or all the work that went into it, and all the people that you spoke to. I don't really have specific questions, because being on the fire board for two years, I know a lot about, or for four years, I guess, I know an awful lot about what was going on, at least I thought I did. And so, I can't, I don't, at this point, have any direct questions, but I wanted to make sure I made that point, beat it to death, because I, personally reading this, someone could get the wrong impression, I don't want them to do that. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Point well taken, yes. Mr. Girkke?
First question is for John. Did you say that you had been an interim fire chief for six years?
Five different departments.
Oh, okay. It's inside joke with the man sitting over there. So, number one, reading through your report, gentlemen, I remember being interviewed by you, I don't know how long ago that was, but I have to commend you on the report. I didn't get too much new information out of here, except for your discourse about Station 16, 18, and 9. That was informative, but like Mr. Griselli said, I'd been on the fire board for a number of years. But I do have to commend you for the work you did in terms of coming out here, doing some interviews. You're from the outside, you know, almost a foreign country in a way, you know, clear across the United States, and you managed to come here, gather all the information, sponge it up, and then put out a report like this, which another individual, you know, other than Bob or myself, could read and, you know, really grasp what's going on. So, commend you on the report in that sense. Now, when I read through it, I'm looking at the big question, and I think some people have touched on it. It seems to me the big question here of why the report is, what we're looking at is gathering data in order to evaluate risk. Is, am I getting that correct?
Yeah, I think that if you're saying, is that the essence of the study, I think our study stands on its own merit in terms of evaluating the situation. If we had no data to go on, and somebody just gave us some, what they believe, I think our significant findings would be, you know, the same. Okay? You know, somebody said, "Well, this is, this is about how many calls we have, and this is what we do, and this is the ladder truck, and this is where it's at." I think the report would have been essentially the same. Okay? The data piece is important in the sense that it helps you understand more about, you know, what's being done now. More importantly, going forward, is this won't be the last time that there'll be a council sitting here trying to assess, you know, what the fire department should do, or at the sunset of this agreement, and another change, you know, several years down the road, which you need, you want to have the information to do that. It wasn't available in the quality or quality that we think is possible, and we just, we want to put that on the table so that hopefully the situation improves. But I can tell you, I think the, you know, the significant findings in terms of operations, sharing of stations that was done by G I, that wasn't really done by looking at data, that was done by GIS analysis.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me pose a second and similar question, and I'm going to spin it a little differently, if I might. Sticking with this whole idea of data and risk and so forth, we started out, as you, or somebody even tonight, I think, mentioned, I think it was Mr. Malpe in his report, we started out in, prior to 1979, with two fire departments, six stations. And the, so the approach to risk has been rather organic, I'll call it, meaning, we started out with six stations, when we came together as one department, we immediately closed down two, so then we had four stations, and then a while later, we closed down a whole company at Station 13, because Station 13 used to have water, in other words, an engine, and a truck running out of there, and then we shut it down to where we only had the truck. You mentioned in your report also how with the new Belmont-San Carlos fire department, compared to South County Fire, we made the decision to put the truck sometimes in Belmont and sometimes in San Carlos. And you asked the question in your report, why was that? And I think at the time, the fire board said, it, we were dealing with risk, and where do we want that service coming out of, and how do we want equitable coverage between the two partners? And that's why we did it, other than the fact that we'd built Station 14 and now had a garage space to put the vehicle. And the other risk factor that we approached organically, I would say, is hazmat, and you mentioned that in your report, about whether we should have it here or not. Now, I've got some questions later on, but just staying with my theme here about risk, you can talk to the, Mr. O'Donnell, sitting in the seats right behind you there, about how that came about, major incident in San Carlos, the loss of some of our firefighters that day of the incident, incident, others who lived with, you know, that day for years to come, and that was the impetus for starting hazmat in San Carlos. You mentioned it in the report, and you say you don't know why it's here, that's why it's here. And again, that, to me, is dealing with risk in an organic fashion. You're kind of weighing things, you're adding things, you're cutting things off and saying, "Okay, how does this work?" And the most recent one, of course, was shutting down engine service out of Station 13 and saying, "Okay, how does this work?" Unfortunately, I don't think, I think you're right in your report, we don't have all the data, there's a number of reasons for that, changing systems and so forth. But my question to you after that long story, if you will, where do you think we are in this whole process of, you know, you guys study data, where do you think we are in terms of this risk analysis and our history?
Well, again, I would go back to say that the fire department has not done a particularly good job in collecting data to make decisions or to recommend different directions of providing different levels of service. Ultimately, and I will tell you, ultimately, at the end of this process, no matter how much study we do, we could spend, you know, we could spend the next three years studying the situation. The choice about emergency services is, comes down to risk in terms of, what is the level of risk a community is willing to accept for the money that, you know, that it can spend? Okay? So, efficiency is not just a buzzword in San Carlos, it's a buzzword everywhere now. So, the fire department has done, and I think we say this in here, if money were no object, if it was not a financial deficit driving, you know, driving the issue, the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department would probably continue to exist and do very well, you know, making the changes it needs to make. Okay? And, but that's not the situation, that's not the situation we were presented with. Right? The situation we were presented with is, this is a financial situation, we need to look at different ways of delivering service to include that their, you know, EMS demand is the most significant demand in our community, is going to continue to be, and how can we do that more efficiently? So, collecting data is only one part of it. As I said, if there were no, if there were no financial issue, we probably wouldn't be standing here, talking about this issue, because they're delivering a good quality of service. But what is driving is the fact that the city needs to, or at least it's made its decision, that it needs to look in a new direction, and that it can't do it with the current partner, with Belmont, for the reasons that we stayed in there, because you're looking at a marriage of a fire protection district, which, you know, has its own fire tax structure, as compared to a municipal government that doesn't. So, you know, again, I'll just say that the data collection and making decisions on data is only one small part of it. And I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Well, it segues into, I was going to stop there, but you've given me such a good segue. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask one more question, and I'll come back around to the other ones later. On page 41 of this report, it says that San Carlos would like to save $1 million to $1.2 Now, there could be argument that really this whole thing started over about $125,000 in the last budget cycle, but that's what's in this report, is that some comments were made about trying to save $1 million to $1.2 million. From what you guys have, the data you've collected and the report you've written, do you think that's possible, and if so, how?
Well, we won't know until bids are received. I think if, I think it's very possible, yes, but you certainly won't know until you see proposals and get a chance to evaluate them. But do I think it's feasible? Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Forgot your hair.
Yeah, let me. No, I don't mind being skipped. No, but I would like to, like, a couple of my council members here, before I ask a question, a little introduction, especially for some of our viewers at home, on the web, or on TV. I want to make sure citizens of San Carlos know some of the real positive parts of this report, which talked about, you hit on them slightly, but our overall response rates from the work that's been known over the last 20 or 30 years, our low property damages, the actual physical locations of where our stations are, I mean, this is thinking that's been done over several, several years here. Our total protection of life in the fire department is so good in San Carlos, most of the factors that measured, we were either double or half, which meant we were twice as good in all cases as industry averages throughout the country. So, we're in great shape. And again, what drives this, it's interesting, I had lunch today with someone who works for a county government in Texas, outside of Dallas-Fort Worth, about 10 times the size of the city of San Carlos, and he showed a chart that showed, in all business sectors of government, parking, rec, planning, you went through it, over 10 years, all these departments have diminished in headcount a quarter to half of where they were 10 years ago. Cutting, reductions, 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 and yet, safety has gone up. And we kind of shared the same sorrow over lunch, because that's the situation we're in. We were able to hire people, and of course, with wages and benefits and pensions, that's kind of why we're in a situation where we'd love to maintain that level of service, but the sustainability is not there. I think the other really important thing that I read out of the report that we haven't talked about is, decisions that were made with our JPA 10 years ago were probably the best decisions made at that time, but things have changed. So, there were comments in there about use of the ladder truck, the hazmat, using assessed value as one of the components of the distribution of costs, maybe could have been good at that point, but now, some of those models or approaches do not work in current day's needs for the city of San Carlos. So, it actually showed, and to me, that's good news, because change is good, and we have to be flexible to look at change and how it impacts us and the level of service and the affordability. So, that's my quick, two-minute summary of the report. It really is a compliment to our staff... It really is a compliment to our staff, but I'm also opening a door that we continually need to look at where we are now and look ahead on where we're going. So, with that, my first question is a real general one. You know, many, many cities, as you know, in the Bay Area, especially on this side of the Bay, we have 20 cities in our county, are looking at change. Most of the change is merging and consolidating two or three cities. One of the things that I've done in my business practice was, when you do consolidate, you also re-engineer the process. Re-engineer, retool, whatever you want to call it. And my question is, actually, it actually pertains to a quote here, which I'm referring to on page 38, I'll quote unquote here, you say, "Medical demand is the primary need for San Carlos residents. Yet, service levels are geared more towards fire protection. The trend for mostly emergency medical services demand will continue." So, this is an area where there's change. You know, we're running a fire department, a lot of what we run, I mean, there's been changes, but it's still a fire department, and yet, the business model towards emergency medical services, I hear from citizens, and now I'm reading in your report, 54% is emergency medical services versus 1% for structural fires, is a tremendous shift of what the business need out there is. So, my overall question through all this talking is, in your experience, where have you, where have cities been successful in doing the re-engineering? Not, you know, making adjustments to hazmat and a fire truck and more data, I'm talking about the process itself of how we provide emergency, I'll just call it emergency services. How, give me a city or two that's been successful, and how did they change? What created change? Because I think us changing is going to be tough. So, how do we do that?
Let me give you the last part of the answer first. They made the change kicking and screaming, because, and for the reasons that we talked about earlier. The one, the one recent example I can give you is the city of Vancouver, British Columbia, which we just finished a major study of in January of this year. And if you've been there, it's a vertical city, you know, I think 700,000 population, over 600 high rises from, you know, a generation ago, when it was still industrially based. It's a big change. About 20 years ago, maybe 15 years ago, before my time, Tridata did a study there and suggested that they needed to go to light-duty EMS response vehicles. Personnel were not particularly happy about doing it, but they made the change, and it was successful. And as the change was made, they also implemented a mandatory residential sprinkler program in the early 1980s. It's the largest city of its size that has a mandatory residential sprinkler program. And their fire incidents in Vancouver, a very large city, are very, very, very low. They began to, they closed some stations, particularly some single-unit stations, they implemented some EMS quick-response units. Over the years, those units began to morph into larger vehicles. The initial, the initial focus was on, just as I said, light-duty response units, they tended to get larger, more equipment, I think they were up to three persons. We just finished a second study, and we looked at the situation, and what they were doing was working well. They needed to go back to the original concept, and that they are now implementing a recommendation that we made, that their ladder companies, which because of structural fires are almost nonexistent, because they've had a residential sprinkler program for so long, that now, there are ladder companies, and I forget, 12 or 14 of them, I think, in the city, are going to be cross-staffing EMS response, light-duty response vehicles. So, I mean, that's an example of saying, you know what, we're, you know, we're going, our problem is like every, it's not a unique situation, that medical demand is an area of highest demand. That's a recent example that I can give you. There are many others like that.
No, just one.
Flexible staffing, you know, looking at putting more personnel on when the demand is highest. At the same time, I don't want to give anyone the impression that we're saying, address these issues at the expense of fire protection. Because there's nothing in our report to suggest there should be a, an elimination of fire protection. Okay? We maintained two stations, okay, had a minimum, two engine companies, still AORs staffed, okay? In fact, one of the options is there is to increase the staffing to four, such that you can do both units simultaneously. So, there are, so, I want to make it clear, there's nothing in here that says, you know, somehow, we're re-engineering for EMLs at the expense of fire protection.
See, the pain for your choice is because of the size of your city and your Fire Department. If you had multiple stations, you have a lot of choices. When you have only two stations, you may have good response times, but what happens when you have a call, and you send one engine, and you have to wait for backup to meet safety requirements, but do what you would expect a fireperson to do? And so, this study is meant to give you the information that's available to us to help you make a decision, plus your look at the past, and what your losses were, and find, well, did anything change? And therefore, can we take that risk and make this decision?
Great, thank you. Mr. Klein?
Okay, well, it was brought up, so we're going to talk about type of vehicle response and cross-staffing. So, currently, with our current department, we have the ability to respond, if we're just looking at San Carlos, not including the JPA, just in San Carlos, we have the ability to respond to one fire at a time, based on the fact that we have a truck that doesn't have the capability to have water, and we have an engine that doesn't have the capability to fight a fire due to the fact that it has only three people on it. So, at all times, if there's any fire, we need both pieces of equipment to show up. And you list a, there's a footnote in here talking about one of the fires that we currently had, and this isn't fact, this is just what the first responders believed was the issue, and that was the truck showed up first, having the inability to deploy hoses and wait for the other company to show up, and then to begin immediately fighting the fire. The truck showed up, had to wait for an engine to show up, then they began deploying hoses and fighting the fire, and the belief is because of that, we may have lost somebody. And that's correct, right? In all those situations, that we have the only ability to get to one fire at a time.
That's correct.
We have the ability to go to two medical calls at a time, correct? If we send one engine and one truck?
Yes, okay.
Okay. So, they both can do that. If we were to cross-staff and add a firefighter onto the other engine, and cross-staff with a light-duty rescue truck, which for most people who don't know, it's a glorified pickup truck. It's a little larger than a pickup truck and has the tools for EMS, but does not have the ability to fight a fire. If we were able to do that, we could possibly respond to three or four medical calls at one time.
That's correct.
And we'd also, if we had four people on an engine, and possibly two engines, if we were to move the tiller truck and have another engine, we'd have the possibility to begin at least fighting two fires simultaneously.
That's correct.
Probably would require other equipment to come in from mutual aid due to the size of the fire, but we'd be able to at least start fighting the fire without mutual aid, correct?
With limited choices on what actions you take in a fire.
Yeah, of course, of course. And I understand that mutual aid comes into it, but we'd at least have the ability to begin putting water onto the fire. So, then my other question comes into, you had mentioned here about the truck, the tiller truck, that you do not believe it is the right piece of equipment for San Carlos. That we, an engine, or a quint, as you bring up, is more a proper piece for San Carlos due to the fact that we would have the ability to have water in our downtown area, or in that highly concentrated area where it appears that that's the station that has the most calls. But that station also does not have water, correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, I mean, you don't make real recommendations in here, because I understand you want us to be able to make those, but you do somewhat recommend that the tiller truck is not the proper piece of equipment for that.
Yeah, we say that.
Yeah, it's blatant. Do you believe the tiller truck is the right piece of equipment there if we stay in the JPA? And we still only have four companies? Or do you believe going to an engine regardless would be the smarter idea? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah, you know what? I think probably a, if, again, are you looking at it just from the viewpoint for San Carlos? Are you looking at it from the...
So, I'm looking at it just for, as we're San Carlos City Council members, just from the viewpoint of San Carlos.
I mean, I'll just say that, I certainly, I cut my teeth on tractor-drawn aerials, you know, in the inner city, so, I'm what they would know as a truck guy, you know, for many, many years. You know, in terms of flexibility, being able to perform multiple functions, I'm not convinced that a tractor-drawn aerial is right, you know, is right for this community.
Okay.
That, or an engine, particularly if those resources are available from neighboring jurisdictions, as they are, and as the GI shows, you know, that I'm not convinced that it's needed. Typically, where you would need that kind of duplication of additional ladder trucks is really where you're going to a lot of multiple dwelling fires that are in non-sprinkler buildings. Typically, it's a two-punged approach from the front to rear, you know, multiple aerial ladders to multiple-story buildings typically greater than three or four stories. That's not the situation here. So, you know, in my professional opinion, that a quint or an engine would be satisfactory.
Okay.
And you might want to look at your fire prevention ordinances again, and see if you should be looking at some retroactive requirements, because they just do what they do, and each building is a fire problem, and that could help solve the problem.
Okay. Now, getting off the truck, I have a question about, it was brought up earlier, about the decisions made 10 years ago possibly being the best at their time. You discussed assessed valuation in your report on page 43, and you talk about if a future option includes service sharing, like a JPA or whatnot, that assessed valuation is not a good measure for cost sharing. Why is that?
For the reasons that we stayed in there, because if you're using assessed valuation, and there are probably some situations where it may work, but you can have significant differences between two communities. If you're charging based on assessed valuation, you're making the assumption that the most expensive properties require the most protection, and that's what it comes down to. And I will tell you, the reverse is typically true. You know, that blighted neighborhoods tend to require more fire protection. So, you know, assessed valuation is doing just the opposite.
So, if we were to use assessed valuation, the better way to use it would make it the opposite. Whoever has the higher-value property would pay less due to, I mean, if you were ever going to use it at all, that would make more sense than the current model we have now, correct?
It's just not a, it's just not an all-good measure to use.
Okay. And then the last thing I'm going to bring up before I pass off, is page 44, you list, under Table 10, the personal salary benefits and overtime. I understand how hard it is to knuckle down on these numbers. The table you have, unfortunately, is incorrect, we're actually at about $10.3 million. And I'll pass this out to my council members, and you guys can have a copy if you want. It's really small, but I emailed the city clerk. I got this from the HR director at the JPA. Took about 10 emails to get it all filled out, but we're actually at about 10.3, so 8.8, it's about $1.5 million shy. And I just wanted to make sure that we all understood exactly how much we were paying. So, these are for you guys, and one for Christine, if you want to hand that to them. And then she has a copy of the Excel if you would like to amend that. But yeah, I noticed that difference, and it stuck out to me.
Could you have made this a little smaller? I can't seem to...
You can get the Excel off Christine, and it'll blow up for you.
Certainly not going to be able to read it, so thank you anyway, though.
But yeah, so I did the rough math, and it's about $10,275, $425, but that's, of course, not adding any of the cents or the small change. But that's it, I for now, so I'll pass off for a little while.
Mr. Mott?
Gentlemen, you, there's a discussion on page 56 about battalion chiefs. So, for some folks who don't know what a battalion chief does, number one, can you very briefly explain what is a battalion chief? And number two, you start to describe that we, for San Carlos after October 2011, it should not implement a system where it hires its own battalion chiefs. You go further to say that to staff one battalion chief's position 24 by 7, we should expect to pay about $800,000. Even if salaries and benefits are reduced by 20% under a new play plan, the cost would exceed $600,000. So, can you explain, what is a battalion chief, and what is your course of action following?
Okay. A battalion chief is a ship commander responsible for more than one station. They have day-to-day responsibilities in terms of management, oversight of the personnel, directing the captain, doing personnel evaluations, performing training, all of the management-related functions in terms of operating that particular ship, doing staffing for that ship, and also then for the, you know, the next shifts, to make sure that the right number of personnel with the right qualifications are on duty. And then, the most significant responsibility is to respond to structural fires and other incidents where there are multiple units dispatched. And the battalion chief's responsibility is to establish the incident strategy, and then oversee the operation through its entirety. So, it is a critical position. It's certainly much needed. The question then becomes the number of personnel that, you know, a battalion chief can oversee effectively. The span of control is typically five to seven stations, depending upon, you know, the number of personnel, whether there's two units in a station, but a rule of thumb is five to seven stations. And when you look in, when you look at San Mateo County, with battalion chiefs to the north of you, to the south of you, you know, it really doesn't make sense for San Carlos on our future model, with two stations and two engines, or some slight variation thereof, to have a 24/7 battalion chief.
Interesting.
When those services can be provided from other partner agencies.
Excellent. Moving to, one of the things we were talking about was continuous shifts. Yeah, I think this is really talking about the 56-hour work week versus 72, and you put in your report on page 47, apparently, one firefighter commented he once worked 13 shifts consecutively without a day off. Is that even legal?
I, I, I'm not an attorney, so I...
Okay.
Yeah, that's a question to someone else, but it certainly wouldn't be ethical.
All right.
But that was, you know, that was the situation, and I don't know that that's occurring now, but firefighters do work multiple shifts because of the staffing profile, the arrangement for staffing that they use.
Many organizations are working hard at this time because they recognize that risk, and are trying to limit that to three concurrent 24-hour periods.
And some would argue that that's even too long.
Okay. May I jump in here a second?
Please.
I think if that did happen, the only time I can imagine that happening in the history of this department would have been during the transition time from South County Fire to the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, at which time, it was similar to now, except it was even worse, because whereas now, we're getting incredible cooperation from our firefighters, our chief, our battalion chiefs and so forth, they're staying with the program instead of jumping ship. Back then, we had guys jumping ship, we had, we had guys out on disability, I mean, the department was a mess. And just to keep stations open and not brown out, fellows were working overtime. Maybe then, we had somebody work that kind of shift schedule, but not since it's been Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department, I don't believe.
Imagine standing before the judge, and you had a terrific fire engine accident with a smaller vehicle full of people, and it was proven that person had been working six shifts. It would be tough.
I'll ask one more question before yielding. Page 18, you talk about hazmat, and I want to dive into this just a little bit. Your point there is the workload for hazmat 13 is so small as to not be distinguishable. Considered over time, the reliability of the engine-ladder truck at Station 13 is not affected by staffing the hazmat unit. So, it sounds like if hazmat is there or not, the ability to respond to calls for San Carlos residents is not going to be affected. Did I read that correctly?
That's right.
Let me follow this up. One of the things you had mentioned is hazmat should go somewhere, perhaps a two-station fire department is not the best place. If you were to speculate, what would be an appropriate place for hazmat to go?
And, well, I...
And again, I'm not going to, because again, our study was really looking at the situation with San Carlos, to make some kind of a decision or recommendation on that would require us to analyze the county's system, which we did not do.
Great. So I'll just summarize that whether or not hazmat is here, the effect of that on the station specifically thirteen, which sounds like our busiest station right now, would not be affected.
That's right.
Great. I'll pass right there.
Mr. Griselli?
Well, yeah, I just, as questions are brought up, I want to make sure that everybody understands that there's always a part B to the answers and I'm not trying to, you know, correct you gentlemen, but if you don't have, let's say, a tiller truck or a ladder truck and let's say one of our neighboring folks do, because we do have mutual aid and drop boundaries in this county, which is wonderful, I guarantee you, if they're putting out a million and two for these vehicles every so often and we're putting out thirty-five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars for a pickup, a glorified, you know, an extra pickup truck, they're going to figure out pretty quick that maybe we should pay for some of that. So I want to make sure everybody understands, if we don't have these vehicles, we're going to end up paying something for them, for the usage of them. So again, I want to make sure the public understands that it's not just either or, that we don't have to have it.
Can I ask a question then? How much do Woodside and Millbrae pay for their truck services if they don't have tiller trucks?
Mr. Klein, I have no idea what the answer is. All I'm saying is, is that if I'm running, if I'm in Redwood City and I'm continually sending my million, one point two million dollar vehicle out here for whatever reason, I have to have some sort of a work with it. If we had a county fire department however, that's a whole different world. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's not going to be free if we, if we end up, you know, going that way. At least, am I wrong in this or do you have-
I think the councilman's point is well taken. There are some cities that don't have a ladder and get ladder truck service. It goes to the broader point that, well, certainly the J P A has its operating in the county and the boundary of the system is an excellent model. When it was implemented, nobody's forced all the days when cities would have to begin to-
Right.
-cut services.
Cut services.
So, you know, whether someone will pay for that, you know, expect to be paid for that, or that is a, you know, you provide this, we provide that scenario.
Right. You can do a trade-off with all kinds of things. We could be doing things for other cities, but I just, I just, nothing's free.
Nothing is free.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that point was made. And when we looked at, and again, just as talked about the battalion chiefs, I think that the model that you mentioned, it's twenty-four seven, it's, it's, right now, it's three, we have three people on it. If we don't have a battalion chief, again, some, someone is going to have to be a battalion chief somewhere. So again, all part of the part and parcel, when we go for a request proposal, that'll be involved in the costs.
That is, that's one of the elements that we include.
It'll be built in, not necessarily that much hopefully, but some percentage of that number will be built in. Again, nothing free, so that's all I had.
Mr. Gerka?
First question I wanted to ask segues on the comment that Mr. Griselli just made regarding battalion chiefs because I think if, well, I'll ask it this way, I'll ask it as a question rather than make it as a statement. Did you guys look at some of the duties of our battalion chief, chiefs and what they do? And if we don't have battalion chiefs or if we're buying battalion chief service that's typical from another department, then how do we get done some of the things that our battalion chiefs are doing? And I'll give you an example, I'll give you one example. Our battalion chiefs take care of fleet maintenance. In some departments in some cities, that's done through another department in the city because there's another department, like in our city, we have a department that takes care of fleet maintenance if it's, you know, the garbage, not the garbage trucks, but the other equipment and trucks that we have as a city. If we just had a fire department, we'd just send it over there, right? In our case, we don't have that, so it's, you know, our battalion chiefs take care of that. How might we do that?
Each of, you're right, and each of the battalion chiefs do have collateral responsibilities, only one of them being training coordination in the other fleet. Our expectation would be under, under a particular proposal, the expectation is that you're going to have to have administration to include coordination of fleet services. Battalion chief doesn't physically turn the wrench.
No.
Okay? They're coordinating, they're coordinating with, you know, various fleet maintenance vendors to provide those kind of services. So the expectation would be that will be provided by someone, you know, under our new arrangement.
Okay.
Yeah, another possibility is that that, that that responsibility would be given to a station officer. So there's any number of ways, but clearly it has to be, it has to be considered in, you know, when the proposals are vetted.
Station officer being like a captain at one of the stations.
I want to stress-
It's a coordination function.
Yeah, sure.
I wanted to stress something in that, I want to make sure, so we're not recommending a battalion chief is not needed.
Yeah.
It's not cost effective and it's better to share those resources with a larger group of companies, whether it be multiple cities or one city.
Right. Okay. Very good. I want to stay on the battalion chief and I'm going to pull in the truck issue as well on this. In your report on page thirty-four, you talk about truck service and I know you talk about it in the report, but I flagged it on the appendix on page A seven, you talk about the battalion chief and how we could, we could contract that out. So my concern with both of those is especially in the case of a structure fire and especially in the case of the most western part of San Carlos. If you look at page thirty-four, that's where you show a map and you say, we could get ladder truck coverage from Redwood City at station nine and from San Mateo at station twenty-one. And my concern is there's a big area of white in the western part of San Carlos, which is mostly hillside, some, a big part of its Crestview and the streets that come off of Crestview. The other part is our boundary and it's a hillside area with Belmont up around Schelford and that area there where the water towers are. It's outside the eight-minute zone. And my concern is this, that we have a fire at one of those locations and the battalion chief doesn't show up for ten minutes and the truck doesn't show up for ten minutes. So we've got engines there, we've got water and they're limited on what they can do. And that's my concern. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. As I think I said earlier, ultimately it's going to be a matter of choices. And, you know, and the response time for a truck into that area, while it might exceed eight minutes, it certainly would not be, you know, much beyond that. The second issue is in terms of the types of structures that are there and looking at the incident types that you have, my experience would be the ladder truck, you know, a designated ladder truck in terms of a tractor drawn aerial is not the resource that's going to bring you the kind of, that's going to improve your incident outcome, you know, beyond waiting for one a few minutes later that's coming from a neighboring jurisdiction. And the number of incidents that occur there, you know, don't justify that level of redundancy which you have, which you currently have with a truck company at thirteen. So, you know, while certainly the argument can be made, we want the truck there because we can get to the westernmost part of our border, you know, in five or six or seven minutes. Then you, you know, and if that's, ultimately if that's what the council's choice is and that's what they want to do, then that's, that's the reason why we set this up as we have. Personally, professionally, I don't think that it holds water, okay? That I, I don't think that the, that the justification merits that level of service. Again, we're not making the final decision, okay? So that, you know, a better, a better response for, I can tell you, on single-family residential structures and low-rise buildings, the number of calls where an aerial ladder is deployed is, I mean, and the numbers show that in San Carlos are very, very, very few times. But again, if local authorities says, we think that a tractor drawn aerial, you know, we want it and this is the reason we want it, then, you know, we're not going to, you know, we don't get to make the choice. We're giving you our professional opinion about a level of, a level of coverage that makes sense based on the historical demand and the risks that are present.
I'm not a, I don't have the experience you guys do by any means. I've never fought a fire. I've created one when I was about eight years old in a big field, but never fought one. But one thing I do hear about often, I'm a building designer, I design houses, and at these conferences I go to, you know, we're all the time talking about hillside homes and especially where they have decks that can't leave her out. And those are great places for fires to start and expand to the structure and so forth and so on. And we certainly saw that in the L A fires a few years back, or probably by now, it's about ten years back, but anyways. That, so that's my concern when I bring up this thing about the B Cs and the truck is that we have a fire in one of our hillside communities where we've got, they're not, they look like single-family homes, single-story from the street, go to the backyard, they're three stories tall and they have decks hanging off the back of them. How do you get people out of that situation in rescue? How do you deal with that kind of fire? What kind of equipment do you need? And we don't have any quints, so.
One real quick point now, I'll let you on. In terms of the battalion chief, you have to remember that these are not static resources. Unlike fire units, which typically you do a station location analysis, the assumption is made that it's responding, you know, from its quarters. And that, and busy systems, that's not always, you know, that's not always accurate. For battalion chiefs, they are much more mobile. So to look at the location of a battalion chief in San Mateo or Redwood City from a particular facility location and say, well, you know, that's going to be ten minutes or twelve minutes is probably not accurate. They may be sitting at a station on their westernmost border, okay? And in fact, be into that particular area that you're talking about faster than, than even sixteen is. So, you know, response time for battalion chiefs are more nebulous and it's not just from a facility. I would think they would certainly meet, you know, invariably meet the eight-minute response time, but we put in a measure of ten minutes to make sure that was within reason.
A ladder truck is not a mobile device that you can work up and down a block very easily in a wildland urban interface fire. That's why more and more agencies have to get very, very strict on wildland vegetation management interface rules. So you don't have to worry about homes overhanging and if you need a ladder truck to get to it. Look at a high-rise and you go up ten floors, you can't get a ladder truck up there normally because you got reach in a ladder or higher. And yet the building's designed not to have to do that. And so we keep emphasizing, you're not going to solve your problem with everything through a reactive response. You got to get tough with automatic sprinklers, you got to get tough with wildland urban interface controls because when you have those situations, you often have multiple structure fires going at once. And, and you save your need for the ladder truck for those situations where it's effective in multi-family buildings, four or five, six stories high that aren't sprinkler. And we encourage today that every building be built without the need for one. So the issue, because one of our truck companies is also a company that's used for rescue and it carries all kinds of rescue equipment in doing that, it's possibly another source, another type of vehicle can do that. So I'm just saying, there's flexibility and there's need to look at alternatives and a ladder truck isn't going to solve all your problems up in residential areas. It's going to be very, very limited. And it's not that you, it's not right or wrong to have one. It's where do you want to put your money and do you have it to put it there?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have, actually, the last two questions I have, I'll ask them both now. One is, Mr. Griselli actually referred to fire protections like an insurance policy. On page seven, you say each community must determine its level of acceptable risk and then what's, and which is the ability to pay for a certain level of protection as compared to the potential loss? I was very interested to see the six-year data on fire, that we average about one structure per month. The average annual loss of property is a million and two for the entire year. There's a lot of carport fires or pretty small fires, a pretty small amount. The part that's very difficult is how to prepare for loss of life and how do you measure that? I'm not even going to try. But the third part I want help with is we do make more than a thousand calls per year for emergency medical services. And where, I'm not sure if that's the same as how much you're going to spend to, to, to prevent loss of life. I look at it more, I just kind of switch the formula around. We're saving lots of lives. We're making people comfortable, people are getting into the hospital quickly with a stroke, they're diabetic, they're passing out, you don't know what's going to happen in the next two minutes. I mean, we get three calls per day. I would think we're saving a life every day or something, some level of quality of that. So is there any measurement, you know, rather than any insurance stuff, you know, when I look at property loss, it's nothing. But when I look at, at quality of life, saving lives, what kind of measurement? Because I'd like to say, we're going to spend this much to provide this quality of service to save lives. You know, is there any data on what we do in that area?
There is and it gets back to the, to the, to the issue of collecting data. The, I will tell you, the best-in-class organizations that are providing EMS, you know, at an ALS level, they track everything from, you know, the time of intubation, drugs onboard to the patient, patient outcomes, you know, what was found upon arrival, continuous quality improvement, and they're analyzing, you know, basically what level of service that they're providing as compared to, you know, what, you know, what other benefits gained from it.
Okay. But did you see any of that reported here?
We did not get into that level of detail. And maybe that, hopefully that data is available.
But that could be a tremendous opportunity there.
Absolutely.
For value.
I mean, I will tell you nationwide, there is question about whether a, an ALS system of the highest magnitude is in fact saving the lives that people think that it does. I mean, our whole ALS experiment is from, you know, Roy and Johnny back on, you know, Rescue Fifty-One. And there are some systems that are saying, you know what, we're not convinced that we're getting a return on investment for as many paramedics as we have. I'm not making a statement that it's not, I'm merely saying by collecting information, you can find out whether or not your system is working and providing the results that you want it to provide.
Okay. I would think that'd be something that we would want to look at.
And that, in a study of the county, that's one of the questions that I can tell you we would ask the county medical director. And, you know, the health officers, you know, are, you know, the mandatory ALS units, is that really in fact providing, you know, the return on investment? Are there ways to do that?
I think that answered me. I think that's funny.
Just a minute, if I could just, excuse me, apologize to interrupt. You know, when I talk about insurance, believe me, I was talking about lives.
No, no, yeah, I know.
Okay. Just to make sure everybody understands.
Oh, sure.
I mean, you can replace property, but lives are the most important part.
I said, I don't want to skip any, through any of those three areas.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that you knew where I was coming from.
I couldn't measure that one and that's an important one. And the last question, and this is some research I did on, actually we have a firedispatch.com where it records all our nine-one-one calls in the county and by city and so forth, and found out a lot of interesting information. What was, one of the components of that was in round figures, in fact, your chart shows it, where you show call volumes. In real rough figures, we get twice as many calls during the day than we do at three A M. I mean, from eight A M. to eight P M., there's twice the volume as there is from eight P M. on for twelve-hour shifts. You know, I know we have a small organization, but is there any opportunity on, because of course our staffing is equal for twenty-four hours, we staff the same and then they do different things in preparation and training and they've been out and all that sort of stuff. But is there any, any, where, I don't see anything in your report looking at, at staffing compared to where the business need is, since business need at twelve noon on Laurel Street is twice as much as it is at three A M.?
Excellent question and it's in there, I'm sorry that it didn't appear obvious. If you're looking at flexible staffing and you have two stations with three persons, you really can't have a, a more robust system because you're at the minimum.
You're at the minimum, yeah.
So, you know, one of the things that we're looking at is if the stations were staffed at four and you're cross-staffing units, you could essentially have four persons during peak demand periods. peak demand periods.
So you could, okay.
Okay. If, an example, when I, that we show, I think it's Station 16, if the demand, if there was some agreement with neighbors to partner in that station, in fact, you could have five persons on duty at less cost than for each of them independently with three, and you could operate a three-person engine that you have now, and a two-person rescue.
Good.
During peak demands, and then drop back to four, you know, at lower demand periods. So that could be done, and we've considered that when we get into the review of the RFPs.
Thank you.
Very much.
Back to Mr. Klein.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Yes, I have a couple of questions left, and then I figure I'll finish for a while.
Finish up, everybody.
Yeah, so on page 60, you begin talking about, to the extent CAL FIRE is a consideration. On the cons, you put, "Need for more detailed contract to ensure all service requirements are met." Isn't that a con for everybody? I mean, I don't understand why this is particularly CAL FIRE.
Yeah, and that is true. Our thinking was that, and based on some interviews that we conducted, that as a lot, much, certainly a much larger organization, that is by all accounts very responsive to the community. It's still a much larger organization with its base of operations, you know, not right next door to your neighbor. So, you know, one of the, one of the concerns from some communities is the fact that they didn't consider everything in the contract. But that would be true for anybody.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, the other options that we have are, some of them are jurisdictions who have never done this before. So that, you know, it makes sense for that to be a con for everybody, and I was just, I was wondering why it was particular to just one as opposed to all. Okay, and then my last two questions are, on the, we have some union concerns that are listed, and one mentions that we have a need for the fifth company to come back, for a fourth engine to be placed at the Laurel Street Station, Station 13. And you've said a couple of times tonight that we could have a 20% to 30% bump in call volume and still do it with the equipment we have now. So do you find that need negligible?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, I just, I don't find that adding another company is going to somehow drastically reduce your risk or your losses, which are already very low. And I will tell you, in terms of a risk assessment study, there has never been a study nationally or for a large jurisdiction that shows that an X increase in staffing or dollar spent results in a Y decrease in losses. That's never been done. What we know is faster is better, okay? And that there are certain minimums to be required in terms of the tasks performed by firefighters, so that X personnel are needed to carry out, you know, some essential functions. And that, I will tell you, unfortunately, that is the, that's the end of the science as it relates to, you know, as, to programming and planning for fire protection. So in terms of, based on what I see here, adding another engine company, to be able to maintain a, you know, a tractor-drone aerial does not make sense.
As you know, the fire department has been designed by, or driven by NFPA standards and other standards, not by data. And that's why the data systems aren't there, and that's why we encourage you to develop the data systems to answer.
Okay, and my last one is, maybe going to draw on your experience. There's a quote in here that doesn't sit too well, and I'm thinking it might be written wrong or said in a different way. It says, "Does the money savings merit the potential loss in effectiveness if neighboring departments do not continue their existing spirit of cooperation?" So we have four labor groups who represent firefighters and fire departments within the county. This reads as, if we were to change, if we were to go to, say, the state, to go to CAL FIRE, that we wouldn't be part of the system anymore, that we wouldn't see, receive cooperation. And I, I find it hard to believe that that was actually said, or that that intention was given. I mean, you've worked in other regions where other labor groups, it's not always the same labor group who represents everyone. Did you ever see firefighters refuse to help out in another town based on they wear a different patch?
Yeah, and Councilman, that's, that is not the context of their quote, okay?
I just wanted to give a moment for clarity on that.
One of the things that we are very clear in our report is that certainly addressing the issue of dissolution is a short-term issue that you have to address. For the council, it should really want to look beyond just what it does to make this problem go away, and I don't mean that in a trite way, you know, to take care of this problem to provide service next year. So the context of it is, it's not likely that other, you know, if you contracted with CAL FIRE, that somehow every other jurisdiction in South County can say, "Oh, great, we're going to do that too."
Okay, good, good.
And that's the political reality of it.
Yeah.
All right, so...
I wanted to make sure there's some context to that quote.
For the council, it should want to look at not just regional cooperation in the short term, but what are the opportunities to develop a federation in South County? You know, what are the opportunities to even go beyond that to a countywide service, if it makes sense, you know, efficiency-wise and effectiveness-wise? So the context of that is, that may not be achievable, and we, ourselves would probably agree with that, that that, you know, that's a consideration that you need to make.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
But that, it should never be mistaken that the fire departments are not going to work together.
Well, I wanted to make sure that it was put into context, because I didn't want anyone to pull it out and have them believe that that's what was actually being said.
Vice Mayor Mott?
So I'll hopefully wrap this up fairly quickly. You had started talking about a countywide federation, et cetera. I was looking on page two, where you quote, "A countywide department is not likely to become a reality anytime soon. However, there are opportunities to share services with Redwood City and County Fire to lower costs and improve efficiency." I'll also cross that with on page 38. Situation in San Carlos is similar to that of many communities, especially in California, where rising costs of salaries, et cetera. For San Carlos, there are alternatives, though implementing of them will not be easy or popular. That was on page 38. One, countywide, difficult to do, and according to you, not likely to be a reality anytime soon. Number two, the alternatives are not going to be easy or popular. Add some color to that. Why is the county system going to be so tough and not likely? And why are the choices that we're, and second, why are the choices that we're faced with so unpopular?
Yeah. Certainly, when you're talking about the number of subdivisions that you talk about in the county, I can tell you that it's difficult to get two or three or four subdivisions together to do some kind of a major consolidation. I mean, parochialism is alive and well in local government, even when it makes sense financially. Okay, so within the county, I mean, I will tell you, a study like this should be done for the entire county. All right, I mean, it really, in fact, it's difficult, it's difficult for us to do this study just looking at a snapshot of San Carlos, okay? The study really needs, if you're really looking at coverage of ladder companies and staffing and different ALS models and battalion chief locations, you really need to look at that countywide. So the likelihood, when I say anytime soon, you could probably put 20 years in there. Okay, I mean, it's not likely to become a reality, you know, in the next year, two or five years. All right? I don't know if that makes sense, but at least it does to me, being familiar with, you know, other jurisdictions. But it should be a goal, ultimately should be a goal, and one, departments that ultimately make the leap to either a countywide department or to a federation system, start out by sharing functional services. And you folks are doing that. The chiefs have done a great job of, you know, sharing training, of sharing fire marshals, of sharing, you know, EMS, you know, a lot of different areas. You know, even fire chiefs now are, you know, being shared amongst, so bridges are being torn down, but there's certainly a lot of work to go before you could realize a countywide service. Do we think the study should be done? Absolutely. We'd love to start tomorrow.
Yeah.
The real, the real true test is someone providing the leadership of re-pulling the county together, given the current economy and the current situation for all communities, and see how far you can go with the planning process. But you're caught in a situation right now where you have short-term issues you've got to deal with. So there's a short term and a long term. In the long term, absolutely, it needs to be a goal, and someone needs to take the leadership and start soon.
Mr. Griselli, Mr. Gracott?
I just, I think I'm going to ask one other question, and that has to do with, you'd mentioned about the quint. Now, there was a community to the north of us that had a quint, and they abandoned it. I think it may have been because they only had one, and I think they had three guys on it. So tell us a little bit about quint service. Could we do it with one, or would we need two? And how many, how many individuals on the piece of equipment?
You can, you can effectively operate with one quint. There was only maybe several jurisdictions that I'm familiar with that tried to go to an all-quint operation. Syracuse, New York tried to do it probably 20 years ago. It was not particularly successful. Quints do offer challenges because it's, it's a choice between doing certain tasks at an incident scene, and so fire officers need to be trained to be able to make the choices in terms of how they use their resources. And that is, that is a training issue. All right, so is it easy? No, it's not easy. Can it be done? You know, very, very, very much so. It's much like in your garage, you have a toolbox with many tools in it, and you get the one out that you need to do the job. You don't get out the, you know, the five-pound maul, you know, when a, you know, Phillips head screwdriver will do the job. So it's the same, it's a different kind of tool that gives you the aspect of being able to do truck company operations. We even talk about in the report is that many, many departments get hung up on the division of labor in fire suppression, between what an engine does and what a ladder does. And our experience is that few departments, very few departments in fact, have a strict division of labor. And I'm talking about probably some of the largest, like the FDNY, Boston, maybe LA, San Francisco probably. Most other departments assign tasks from the battalion chief based on the arrival sequence, you know, of units, and the tasks that need to be performed. So the aerial ladder is only one tool in the toolbox.
And remember, the smaller the organization, the more need to consolidate and compromise. And yes, it'll work if you want to make it work.
Did you, fellows, look by chance at any, you know, as mentioned, Woodside doesn't have a truck, but, you know, Woodside's primarily rural, and it's a little different situation. But for instance, I don't believe the place where the, we had the major incident, San Bruno, I don't believe they have a truck.
Yeah, they sort of merge with Millbrae.
Right, so there's, I had a list here, I don't know where I put it, but which organizations actually do have truck service in, within their department, within their city? And there's, you know, there's obviously a few that don't. Did you look at what effect that has on not only response times, but, you know, once, once the equipment's arrived, suppression of fire and so forth? Because that's, quite frankly, guys, that's, I know you didn't make any hard recommend, you know, hard, do it this way, or, you know, or no way at all. But what I'm challenged with is, we have a truck right now, in the department that we're in, with the partnership we're in. And you're suggesting, eh, you don't need one. You can just do it with engine service and then get the truck service from someplace else. And my concern as an elected official is, how do I explain that to the residences and the businesses around here? If there's a fire at their home or their business, where's this truck service going to come from? A, and B, is it, is it going to cover the need as well as, as we want it to?
I think you would, I think you would, I don't want to tell you what to say, Councilman, trust me, but I think a good thing to say would be, you know, the approach that we're taking is actually a better fit for our community, because when the truck arrives now, they can't begin to extinguish the fire, except what they could do with an extinguisher. If an engine arrives first, okay, they can begin to take some immediate action with some extinguishing agents and water that our truck does not have. So, you know, in our opinion, that's better for the San Carlos community. That's, that's the only response I can give you.
Okay. Great. Gentlemen, thank you.
Very much.
If, we're going to move into public comment, if you could kind of keep a piece of paper going, any questions that come up, if you could kind of jot them down so we could get them answered maybe at the end of public comment, that would be great. So with that, I do have a speaker card, and I remind everybody that anybody, if you have questions or comments about the study here and our fire services in the city of San Carlos, we welcome you to speak now. Try to limit your time to about two minutes. And with that, I'll start with Jim O'Donnell. Is Jim, yeah, Jim's there. Welcome, Jim. And anybody else who would like to speak, start moving towards the front of the room. Welcome, Jim, how you doing?
Hi, I'm Randy. I hope I can keep it within two minutes, but that's not my norm, really. But I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you and talk on behalf of...
Can you put the microphone a little closer so everyone can hear you?
There you go.
Can you hear me all right now? All right, thanks. I could talk loud enough without one, but anyway. First of all, I want to introduce myself, actually. My name's Jim O'Donnell, and I've been living in San Carlos since 1947, 60-some-odd years. I joined the fire department in 1953 as a volunteer, and as a full-time firefighter in 1956. I put 40 years in the fire department. In those 40 years, I raised myself in various promotions, from lieutenant to captain, and finally to battalion chief in 1976, which I held for 20 years in that position. I want to talk about hazmat, actually, because hazmat is where it started, with me, actually. In 1973, we had an incident in Harbor Industrial Area, which was a contaminated container, which was dumped there illegally. It started to leak, nobody knew what it was. We had a fire department respond, the end result was 17 people went to the hospital, six retarded, and two died from it. Methyl bromide is what it was, is what we found out later. San Carlos responded with two chemical suits, the only two chemical suits in Seminole County. They were never trained in it, we didn't know what to do, and we were, we were astounded about the disaster that occurred afterwards. By 1978, then I was a training chief at the time, and decided that we must have more knowledge and more education between the private and public sector. So what we did, we had several meetings, and in 1979, we put together a corporation, a nonprofit corporation called the Industrial Emergency Council, with about 80 different companies and agencies that actually belonged to this organization. 1978, it was a partnership that we developed, a partnership where we can work together and learn together and respond together. By 19, I've got my notes here. By 1978, we had a very large explosion at Kelly Moore. This was a hazardous material incident. It was an underground naphtha tank, a flammable liquid tank that had exploded and exploded several other ones. In fact, it was probably a five or a six-alarm fire. That fire, I attended off-duty, I took a division of that. It was a scary fire, it was one I never had experienced before. I actually brought a lot of pictures together and took those pictures back in the National Fire Academy and talked about that particular fire. That was a hazmat incident, in addition to the one, I'm running late, okay? So anyway, we had several other hazmat incidences after that. We had one where liquid carbonate went on for seven days in San Carlos. It was an explosion back in New Jersey that killed three people, and they traced the container back here to San Carlos, and it took seven days to get rid of about 200 containers. After that, Loma Prieta happened. Loma Prieta happened, and I was on duty, and I was a command, running a command situation down Industrial Road because all the phones were out.
So Jim, if you could start moving from examples to conclusions on your points here? I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we had plenty of hazmat incidences in San Carlos, and I, I really object to hear that most of the hazmat calls in Northern California, they're not. They're right here. We did a needs assessment, and we found out there was a need throughout the, throughout the whole county about this sort of thing. So what we did is that we, I'm going to go quickly here. Okay, so the hazmat awards, the hazmat team received several, several awards. 1970, 1986, FEMA presented San Carlos an exemplary award, went back to Washington DC to receive that award. Right after that, the Department of Labor actually provided us with a certificate saying we have the... we have the only hazardous material apprenticeship program in the actual country. After that, we were, we had received a resolution at the State Assembly from the Assembly and the Senate, signed by about 22 legislatures on a resolution that we have. All this is hanging in our office, which is next door--
So, Jim, you're going to have to wrap up here, please. Okay, we have other speakers.
Okay, I've got 40 years here and I'm trying to wrap it up--
I know, I'll talk to you more tomorrow when we both have time, but let's move on.
Okay. What I'm saying, the Industrial Emergency Council is a nonprofit corporation. We have 15 employees right across the street at the library. We have over 200 instructors coming from all over the country that teach these classes. We teach every fire department in the state of California, including many county fire departments, consolidated fire departments. We know how we can help and we like to offer our assistance to help and we're only 50 feet away, right? And we're here locally. So, please come on over and take that into consideration. Sorry.
Thank you very much. You've been waiting a while to speak too, I'm sure. Brian Randall. Brian, where are you? Welcome. And anybody else who would like to speak, come on up here, get near this microphone.
Please start. I'll wait till you can see what I'm talking about. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, Brian Randall, San Carlos. What an excellent insurance policy I have here in San Carlos. It's our fire department and it's such a low personal cost to me. I'm a 40-year resident. They have served me well. They are the best. Stay as you are. Gentlemen, I've given you a photograph of the recent San Bruno fire. I was in San Bruno that evening to observe and learn lessons from that conflagration. I hope our fire commissioners did the same that evening. Did you? Okay, I don't know. I suppose I'll never know if you were there. I didn't see you there, I know that. The photo is from the San Francisco Chronicle and shows some of the amazing capabilities of the aerial ladder truck. I used to be a firefighter many years ago and had to do rescues off a 60-foot extending wobbly wooden ladder. Oh, for an aerial ladder truck. Good for me, good for the people I'm rescuing. Mr. Klein, Mr. Ahmed, Mr. Mayor, we have such an excellent grant on our brand-new tiller aerial ladder truck that we can have a pump, hose, and water tank added and still come out well ahead, gentlemen. Now, about the elephant, we know all about the elephant. The reason we are really here at this point is because of the Hatfield and McCoy feud of the past 40 years between San Carlos and Belmont because of the Harbor District annexation attempts beginning 1970. And the feud continues on this day. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for the great, great photograph, by the way.
Anybody else like to speak? Be welcome. A lot of listeners tonight, huh? Very few speakers. Any questions about the report and anybody would like to ask? Well, our consultants are here. Clarifications? Okay. Staff, any questions you have before we turn--
No, I think the council-- I was going to say through the mayor, I think the council's done a good job of going through the report and sharing your observations and questions. We have taken detailed notes and unless there's anything else you'd like to add, we can move on to the next item.
Okay. So, everybody move on to 4B? 3B, sorry.
Do we need to vote to accept the report?
I think so.
I don't know that you need to accept it tonight, Councilmember Grocott, only because there were some questions that you had. I know Mr. Klein had a correction that we need to make, so what I would suggest is we can bring it back at a later date when we correct that table. And I think the mayor had also given me some corrections earlier in the day, so that would be my suggestion.
Okay. So, I'd recommend we are moving on to 3B, which is consideration of authorizing the city clerk to issue a formal request for proposals, RFP, for the delivery of fire emergency services in San Carlos. So, with that, again, we'll have a staff report, any questions from council, public comment, and then we'll be voting on this item. Mr. Moore.
Let me see if I can switch slides here. Hope I can. There we go. And the format here will be similar. I'll make some introductory comments and then we'll have the gentleman from Tri-Data give you some detail. Okay, in this process, I'd like to quickly walk you through the RFP process, remind you of a little history. At the December 14, 2009 meeting, after the revenue measure that was proposed last year failed, council called a special meeting to ask the staff to discuss budget options. At that meeting, there was a fire report that I gave and during that meeting, the council voted to authorize city staff to begin contact with neighboring agencies about potentially looking at alternatives to fire and emergency services. Staff did contact the four agencies that gave us proposals in 2005, that being Menlo Park, Redwood City, Cal Fire, and the city of San Mateo. During that process, we indicated to the four agencies that we would be happy to accept informal proposals and we would probably come forward to the council at a later date with a formal RFP process, which we're talking to you about tonight. We did in fact get two informal proposals along the way. We got one from Cal Fire on March 13th and one from the city of San Mateo on May 5th. Turning to the other two agencies, we heard from the chief at Menlo Fire and I would note that the chief and one of his board members are here tonight in the audience. They indicated that they would be ready to respond to a formal RFP document if the city council chose to issue one. And we also got a letter from the city manager in Redwood City. You'll probably remember that letter. It came to us during the police RFP process where Redwood City indicated that they were going to give us a proposal for police services. They did not intend to give us a proposal for landscape services and that they might give us a proposal for fire services. Staff's observation is now that we have the report and it notes that there's some interesting opportunities for sharing resources with Redwood City, we're guessing that might make Redwood City more inclined to give us a proposal, but we don't know that. However, I note that Chief Skinner from Redwood City Fire is also in the audience tonight. And as I note, staff remains in contact with all four agencies. Part of our assignment with Tri-Data, as the council knows, is to prepare a draft RFP and that is in fact the next item on your agenda. Before hearing from Tri-Data, what I would recommend to you in terms of next steps is that after you hear the presentation from Tri-Data about what's in the draft RFP and you ask your questions and comments as you did with the prior item, that you provide us with input and direction, that you also look at potential modifications and deletions. You'll notice in particular, I highlighted two items for you to consider in the staff report. One is the notion that while we have talked off and on about going back to a standalone city of San Carlos Fire Department, you will notice that in the Tri-Data report, I believe on page 38 or something like that, the consultants indicate that they believe a standalone city fire department would cost in excess of $8 million a year. And they're, and again, as I think one of the council members noted, while they're being very subtle in their findings, I think that's about as close as they come to saying probably not financially feasible for us. That may be an item you wish to delete from the RFP. Also, there's been considerable discussion tonight about the consultant's finding about data quality and the need that if you do contract for fire services with another agency, you may need to step up data quality and reporting. That is a feature in the draft RFP, but you may want to beef it up, would be my observation. And then finally, what we would request is that after the council gives us input and makes whatever modifications or changes you'd like to see in the RFP, we would request that the council give us authority to issue that RFP as you have modified it. And then here's a quick timeline and again, this is a draft. This is subject again to council modification or change. As we envision the process, we would have a pre-proposal conference on November 3rd. The proposals would be due on December 3rd. We would envision presentations to the council by the proposing agency during the week of December 13th. We don't have a specific date for that special meeting yet. And then we would go through a process of questions and analysis in January and then get council direction the week of January 24th and then consideration of a new agreement in February. This process is designed to give us at least six months for rollout and implementation. In our interviews with the four neighboring agencies, we've heard pretty much repeatedly that they believe that it would take four to six months to roll out a new service and we want to provide plenty of time. I know in the last couple of days, I've had questions from some council members about potentially moving up some of these dates and again, I think that's up to the council. If you wish to accelerate these a bit, staff would be open to that. So, with that, let me again hand the podium over to Mr. Bresler and Mr. Montanaro from Tri-Data to talk about the RFP.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor, could I ask Mr. Moore a question, please?
Sure, please.
I'm sorry. Mr. Moore, do we know if the city of Belmont is doing anything like this?
My understanding with the city of Belmont process is that right now, they're leaning towards a standalone city fire department. However, both their consultant and their city manager have suggested to their council that they might also want to receive proposals from other agencies. I'm not aware that they have decided to do that yet. The other significant item I should mention to you about the city of Belmont that we just became aware of recently in our meeting with Belmont staff is they've indicated that if they were to take delivery of the tiller truck, that they would want to modify it. In other words, they would not use it as ordered. I don't know what modification their consultant has recommended. If I had to guess, I think it might have something to do with putting some water on it, which was suggested earlier. But that's again for your information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Part of our task, as Mr. Moore said, is to develop the RFP based on the baseline analysis that we conducted. As we went through the process, there were some key considerations that we kept in mind throughout the development of the RFP, certainly to maintain the quality of services that are already available to the public, citizens of San Carlos, to include the range of services that are provided now and that they must be provided to the city under any future arrangements under generally accepted practices. That there should be an eye towards regional efficiency. When we first started the project, as I mentioned, it was kind of focused on San Carlos and the dissolution process, but we felt that it was really important for the city and its neighbors to keep its eye on regional efficiency, better data collection and reporting. We won't belabor that point. Also, in the RFP, we asked the proposers not to just be encumbered or to be bound by the specifics in our RFP, but that in fact, the city was interested in other out-of-box ideas if, you know, if they had them. The next to last point is that certainly the dissolution process, if it affects anybody significantly, it's the current members of the fire department. And that, you know, you'll notice in the RFP is a section in there about retaining existing employees to the extent possible and we make that fairly clear in there. And then finally, all costs that the, to the extent possible that the council in reviewing the RFPs, that all costs would be understood upfront, that there were no hidden costs. And also included in there was language to the extent that the red circle options would also be shown in the cost proposal such that if a proposing agency were going to include or hire current Belmont Fire Department members and that they were going to be red-circled because their salary level was higher than a comparable salary in their organization, that they would show both costs, both what it is at their current level and what it is in bringing Belmont, San Carlos members in. The elements based on the review that we just discussed, the elements that were important to include were to increase the office of EMS with the possibility of like-duty rescue, cross-staffing, to maintain a three-person staff that is already available and that these were in fact ALS engines or response units, that you would contract with battalion chief coverage. One of the critical issues is certainly whether or not Cal Fire was a viable option. Whether or not you choose Cal Fire is certainly will be dependent upon proposals received, cost, level of services. Bottom line is, Cal Fire could provide an acceptable level of service. They have both the resources, all of the, they provide currently in other jurisdictions, all of the services that the city of San Carlos would need. So, they should not be excluded merely because they are, quote, "Cal Fire," unquote. The service sharing should be included, particularly with Cal Fire and Redwood City. We also want to make it clear that a consideration should be that inasmuch as San Carlos is grappling with these issues, with the dissolution, Belmont is also grappling with them. So, you should see them as an equal partner, just like you would see any other neighboring jurisdiction, to try to build on the regional relationships that are possible. And then finally, that the union's input will be important in this entire process because, you know, they've invested certainly a lot of blood, sweat, and tears. It's a good organization, I mean, a good fire department. The people want to do the right thing, so, you know, they have an important perspective that we think need to be considered in part of the decision-making process. In the draft RFP that we've prepared for you, we envisioned and followed through on what we thought was a cafeteria approach such that a proposing agency could pick, you know, one or more components within the RFP or could choose an option that we did not specifically address in there and propose that as well. It's written in such a way that it's specific on the services and yet it's flexible on the choices. And the choices, we won't fully understand until proposals are in fact received. You go through the vetting process, you know, evaluating the level of services, you know, how they're delivered, any performance measures or metrics that are included in it, and then certainly cost. Three available options are included. One is for an agency basically to replicate, you know, a full-service fire department for the city of San Carlos without it actually being a municipal department, but providing everything from administration to, you know, the specific services, delivery of services, training, code enforcement, fire marshal, administration, battalion chief, all the essential functions that are required for a full-service operation to exist and to operate effectively. The second one was an alternative delivery model with sharing of services, be that battalion chiefs, truck company coverage, training, some of the other functions that are already provided now. And the final option was under a city organized fire department and where, a situation where the fire department, the city actually hires the firefighters and the shifts, the station level supervisors and yet then contracts for those services that are available under option two. That's the third particular option. That's pretty much-- That's pretty much the long and short of the RFP. I would just close by saying that the RFP follows the same general format as other RFPs that the city has put out, and we think it covers everything.
We understand. Great. Questions? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like. I have two questions. So, the full-service model is everything. So does the full-service model also include the cafeteria option? So they would be giving us a proposal on two engines, a proposal on an engine and a truck? I mean, how does that work exactly?
Yeah, good question. If an agency comes in with a full-service option proposal, the RFP is written in such a way that the city has the exclusive right to then negotiate. Okay? So if someone come in and gave a full-service option with, say, two, three-person engine companies, and after the discussion tonight and evaluation of things, and the cost for that particular proposal, the city says, you know what, we would like to do some more with flexible staffing and we would like to offer to do this, that option would be available under that. So you would have the right to do that.
So does the full-service model also include cross-staffing? Or will that be something we have to negotiate with after we receive?
It could include that. I don't, it depends on the agency proposing.
A bidder can propose anything in it. They can answer all of those.
Okay. And then with the enhanced, or the alternate model, which is more the cafeteria approach, that has everything in it, where they're just going to be bidding cross-staffing, they're going to be bidding hazmat, they're going to be bidding a truck, and it essentially would read like a menu.
Yes. And again, you know, when the proposals come in, to evaluate them and then to determine with that particular proponent, you know, if you want to negotiate something that maybe is a little higher level of service could be done in that particular plan as well.
Okay. And then my last question is, tonight, we've talked a lot about data, and a lot of the conclusions say that we're not getting the proper data needed in order to make educated choices. We're doing a lot based on intuition and emotion. I'm looking for the paragraph that talks about data. I want a giant paragraph that talks about what we expect from data, how we expect it to go, and when we expect it to be delivered. If we're going to contract out with someone, I want them to come every quarter and go, here's your calls, and actually get a list of our calls, get a list of what's working, what's not, so we have the ability to re-tweak. No offense, I don't want to have to hire you every five years. I would like for us to actually have proper data so we can make these decisions on our own, based on the fact that we actually have data, which we've proven that we don't have right now. So where is that in the RFP?
There is a, it's not a paragraph, but I know there is language in there about, you know, the having to provide data on all the services provided.
Yeah, I saw that. There's a little bit, but...
Yes. Now, that was intentional, though, Councilman, because what we wanted to do was write, we think this is a pretty encompassing RFP, what we did not want to do was to make the RFP try to replace a contract.
Okay.
Okay? So when you get to that phase and you're saying, look, this is what we want you to provide, and you get into the contract execution part, then there would be more information in there.
Okay, so we would wait for the next phase to do that.
Fire departments are not, many fire departments are not sitting around waiting to respond to RFPs.
Everyone's a little busy.
We want it to be detailed, but not too detailed.
Okay. I guess through the chair, I would point to page five, where it says "Fire Administration." There is some talk about quarterly data analysis and reporting. I guess the question is, you know, does the council feel that's enough detail and specificity or not? I know since three of the four potentially proposing agencies are sitting in the audience, I know the fourth is going to watch this on TV. I think, just listening to the council, you may not even need to add it, because I think certainly I've got the point, so. They may have too. But if you'd like, we can beef it up, as you say.
Okay. Well, those are all my questions. Mayor.
Any other questions on RFP?
Mr. Moore? So one of the things I may like to add in the RFP, we were talking about data, is if you do have an example, not to say this is the format to follow, but you gentlemen have examples of what we would consider good reports, you may want to include that in the RFP, just to give the responding agencies some ideas.
You say a list of types of examples of reports that...
These are some things we would like to see, and I'd probably like to see that. Three specific questions. One, I'm thinking back to our discussions with police services. One of the things that our city felt very strongly about was that we wanted somebody local that we could go to. Is there something in here that talks about a local command structure? To the extent that with the sheriff, we've talked about this is a bureau, and there is a bureau person here, is that something that we could see responded to in this RFP?
I'm not sure, following, you're saying that they provide local oversight or local command?
I'm guessing through the chair that what you're talking about is in the police RFP, we had a police substation with a captain and two clerical. And again, just to throw out an idea, perhaps the vice mayor is talking about having, say, an assistant chief or somebody who's physically stationed here. Is that a fair approximation of where you're going?
And I'm willing to be as flexible with that as you would want to go. But the notion, again, that was important to St. Carlos residents when it came to police was that they did want somebody who was in charge of police, quote-unquote, who was local. They could go to him and say, here's my challenge, here's what I want to do, who do I talk to? And I think whoever responds to this, having somebody who is local that we can point to and say, this is the person, is important to St. Carlos residents. So I'd like to see some sort of incorporation of that in the RFP.
And we certainly can do that. Again, our thought was that would be something that we would definitely make sure had occurred in the contract.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I would suggest that maybe what we could do is very much like police, where if you recall, we had proposals with and without that feature, and the council was able to see what that incremental cost was. Maybe that's how we drafted. Sure, I'll work with the Tri-Data folks on that.
Excellent. Two, hopefully fairly vast questions. When we talk about folks who are ALS certified, throwing out alphabet soup, does this also mean that these folks are ACLS or ATLS certified?
Yes.
They are? Both?
ACLS, Advanced Life Support? Yes.
But not ATLS? Okay, that's good. So they're ACLS certified? Thank you. Question about the flexible staffing. We talked about, maybe for demand services, we may go this way or that way. This is truly a question. At this point, what we've done is we've said, well, maybe we are going to have four or five people at a station, a light-duty response vehicle and a full truck. Is it possible to mix personnel with EMT or paramedics who may not be firefighters? And I'm asking that purely as a question for, I don't know if we can do that, but I'm curious.
Is it possible that a different level of, or an employee, or you're saying that's a civilian EMT, for example? Is that what...
That's precisely what I'm saying.
Absolutely, if possible.
So it may be interesting to call that out. If, again, if 54% of our calls are medical, then maybe it's possible just to get people who are trained for medical and do not need additional...
I think the thing to keep in mind, though, is, could you do that, and could you negotiate something like that with a proposer? Yes, you could. I think the thing to keep in mind, if that's something that's nobody's doing now, the likelihood that they're going to put that forward is probably not real great. But if it's something that you want to do, certainly it could be added.
I'm throwing it out as an idea, as opposed to anything I would want to push. You know, it may end up, nah, that's just not going to save us any money, and it's best to have firefighters across the board. Just looking for...
The thing, when you begin to get into that level of differences in staffing, you're really talking about a very sophisticated system in terms of being able to get the different levels of people, okay, civilian staff or non-safety sworn staff. And it can be done, and it could be included. Again, do you want to put that in the RFP? We can do it. I'm not sure that it does anything for you right now.
I guess through the chair, the other observation I would make is that also, I think, is a function of how much staffing you have per station. I know earlier, the Tri-Data folks said they believed that three, for example, was kind of a minimum, and I'm guessing if you only had three at a station, you might not want to do that. Whereas if you had four or five at a station, then maybe what you're suggesting, Vice Mayor, might be a little more practical, let's say.
There are fire departments just south of you who have BLS units in the fire department, but they function separately from the fire engine.
Yeah, just, again, as part of my background, that's the kind of response that I'm used to, that I was attached as, I was not a firefighter, but I was, you know, one of the guys who would get into the ambulance, and I was not a paramedic or an RN, but two of us go out in the Chevy van, and we could do everything from stabilize the patient to get them to the ER.
It's, you're working in a county-wide model, and those are issues that would also have to be discussed with the county health officer.
That makes it much clearer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions over here?
You know, the only point, again, it's easy to go on other sides of the issue for Mr. Ramad, what he mentioned. I think you spoke to it. Nobody in this county does that right now. Do they?
No, not to our knowledge.
So we're going to go and ask people to do something.
Actually, South San Francisco does.
Well, fine, if they bid, that'd be great. But if they don't bid, I'm just saying, that'd be fine if they bid, but I'm just, I don't want to, I'm concerned of the fact that we make this so complicated that people will go, well, if you want that, we don't do that. So never mind. Thanks very much. I'm just concerned that we make it too complicated.
No, and with your remarks perfectly in heart, this is not something I'm trying to take my shoe off and pound the tables.
I understand. But I'm just, you know, putting it in there, I think, as Mr. Moore said earlier, I mean, a lot of this stuff, we can, when we get the proposals back, we could always go back and forth and say, well, gee, no, we thought of something else. Why don't, how about if we do this? What would that, can you do this? Or does it have a dollar thing? When you put it in there, I mean, if I'm on the outside and I'm looking at this, when we used to bid projects whenever, it was too complicated, I go, never mind.
And that's what our, that's one of the things that we had in mind when we did it.
Yeah, keep it general.
Keep it general.
Keep it general. I mean, again, I'm not saying we throw it away. Don't get me wrong, it's a good idea.
So I think we're all in agreement here for the RFP. We're keeping it simple. That point may come up in the future, in the contract phase or whatever, but for the RFP, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Grokot, question? Thank you.
I have a question that has to do with hazmat. And on page 53, you say that the city should consider that moving hazmat to another jurisdiction will take time to train new personnel. The training would take at least one year to complete, and even then, personnel would probably not be to the level of the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department. How do we keep hazmat seamless? And if we're going to go into this thing about, well, whoever we contract with is going to have to train those people, who's going to pay for that?
I'm not sure I'm totally understanding your question, but in terms of what we think, certainly, and as the gentleman said, I mean, hazmat is very important, and I think we say...
But we're under contract with the county to provide it, and no one else is providing it.
Right.
And so, again, as an elected official, and also as a county resident myself, my concern is, we don't drop the ball on that. We can't drop the ball on that. We may not have that very many incidents here in St. Carlos or even in this county, but all it takes is one. And all it takes is for that to happen, and it's not covered, and we're the provider. Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department, until October 2011, is the provider, and after that, who the hell knows who is the provider? But I feel like it's on us to do it. We're the ones that wrote the letter of dissolution, so it's on us to provide it. So the people are going to have to be trained, and who's going to pay for that training? Who are these people going to be? How are we going to make this seamless? Sorry to get excited, but I'm not very happy about this. Okay, guys?
So I'd like to keep the focus more on the RFP here, so...
It is.
Hazmat's in the RFP that we're discussing. Hazmat's in the RFP that we're discussing. We're going to get a bid on hazmat.
Yeah, well, I guess through the chair, I'd make a couple of observations. Number one, the one-year renewal of hazmat is actually on tomorrow night's Fire Board agenda. So first of all, we don't know if Belmont-St. Carlos is even going to be doing it for the next year. I'm assuming that we probably will. When this came up several years ago, the fire chiefs and city managers met, and they decided that if St. Carlos, Belmont, one or the other both decided to phase out, they would come up with a plan to either disperse it among the agencies or give it to someone else and to budget the money for training. And I assume something similar would happen here. In my discussions with the four agencies that are neighbors, all four have indicated that if the St. Carlos, the City of St. Carlos and/or Belmont wants to continue providing hazmat, they'd be happy to include that in their proposal. Although, as I think is noted in the Tri-Data report, and as I know our two fire commissioners know from our last Fire Board meeting, we were told by the Belmont staff at the last meeting that the costs are no longer fully covered, which means that this year, Belmont-St. Carlos is subsidizing that service. So I think there's a couple of pieces to this puzzle. One is, I think Councilmember Grokot is right, there will need to be some sort of transition because it'll take time to ramp up if someone else does this. On the other hand, I think it's certainly well within the purview of either the Fire Board and/or the two parent agencies to, say, to the county and the other fire agencies, if you want us to continue and renew that contract tomorrow night, I think you better cover our full costs rather than part of them.
Mr. Moore, then thank you very much. Any other questions?
I just want to make one statement. Just as the gentleman mentioned in their report about including, it was on one of the points that they had, including the union. And I think, I think all of us have to realize that this is still a partnership that we have with the folks that work in the Belmont-St. Carlos Fire Department. And we want to make sure that labor's at the table, whatever it is, to make sure that we've had good relations in the last, at least the time that I've been on this council, relative to labor, and I hopefully want to continue that, because this is people's jobs, and they're basically spinning right. We've got them spinning, and it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. And so I want to make sure that we consider that in all the decisions that we do, and when we make the decisions, that we make sure that everybody's informed and everybody has the input and so on. That's the only point I want to make. Thank you.
I want to follow up on that, because it, again, comes back to the hazmat issue, Mr. Mayor. And that is, what Mr. Grisilli was talking about basically was protecting jobs, keeping these guys employed, which, there should be some commitment to that. If those guys stay employed through this process, we don't have a problem with hazmat in terms of training, because we would have the guys that we have now. But if that's not done, and if we don't start talking to the union about what their issues are and working with them, and doing whatever we can also to keep these guys on board and keep these guys employed through the process, then we will have an issue with hazmat. Because those are our employees, and they're trained in this expertise. If we lose them, then someone else has to be trained for it, and it's an expense. It's very unfortunate. It's very unfortunate, guys, that we're going through this at all.
With that, would anybody from the public like to speak on the request for a proposal? Questions or comments? You'd be welcome to do so now. Okay. So with that, can I have here a...
Do we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a motion? Our acting attorney, Ms. Casman, Casman, rather, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city clerk to issue a formal request for proposals, RFP, for delivery of fire emergency services in St. Carlos.
Second. Any discussion on that before we vote?
Yeah, I have a couple of items. I really think we need to strip the standalone department. I don't think it's possible.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
I think we need to strip the RFP part that has a standalone fire department. I don't think there's any way we're going to be able to afford that. So why waste anyone's time? Our consultants pretty much have told us that as well, and they don't like to recommend things. And there's two things they've recommended tonight, and one was about the truck, and the other one was about the standalone fire department. They don't think it's affordable either, and I also think it's going backwards. So I don't see any point of having that in the RFP, and I was one of the ones who brought it up to staff as a possible idea. So I don't think we should go forward with the RFP as it is. And second of all, in discussion of hazmat, I definitely think we need to keep it in the RFP to see what the bid is. There's two partners in this JPA. There's no saying that if the guys could decide to go to Belmont. I mean, that's a fair option. We don't know where they're going to go until we figure out where we're going to go, and that's the best thing we can do for the organization, is to find out where we're going, so there's some sort of determination as to where we're going. So I'd like to speed up the calendar just a little bit. I saw January 10th, we were going to have another meeting with questions and analysis. It would make sense, if at all possible, to make our decision that night, as opposed to waiting for another two weeks to have another meeting with questions, analysis, and make the decision, because I think the sooner we make our decision, the better it is for everybody, because everyone can start making decisions. And I also don't appreciate the lecture about how this is ridiculous that we're going through this again from a guy who votes down revenue measures. You're just as responsible, Mr. Grokot, so you can say your indignation.
Mr. Klein, I think we move on. So what I'd like to do is, would you like to make an amended motion with the standalone?
Yeah, sure.
And we'll see where that goes.
I move to approve the formal RFP with Section 3, the city organized fire department removed from the RFP process.
Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion before we vote?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Moore, I guess I'm confused. How, in the proposal, how are we, if it stayed in the proposal, how does that affect people that might want to bid on this? I don't really know. Why would they even speak to that?
Well, here's the way it's proposed.
I was just confused, Mr. Klein, on why it's in there.
Right. Actually, Councilmember Griselli, your question's a good one, and as I heard it, I thought.
I always ask good questions, Mr. Moore.
You do. The reason that the consultants called this a city organized fire department is they are doing a variation on what some of the cities call a federation. And that is, the fire employees, it's envisioned would be on the city of San Carlos payroll.
Right.
However, the supervision would be provided by one of the four neighboring agencies. Now, there's a couple of things you need to know. Last time around, when we did this in 2005, we asked the four neighboring agencies, would they do such services for us? And they all very nicely but politely said no. This time around, as we've talked to them, I think it's fair to say, some of them have hinted, maybe they would this time. Times have changed, and others have said no. So I think the question here, and again, to be real clear, is, as described by the Tri-Data folks, this is a slightly, it's a variation, I guess I would say, on a city fire department, because it's not a city fire department A to Z, it's city firefighters on our payroll to keep costs down, and then supervision from someone else. But again, I think the discussion the council has is appropriate, as I indicated earlier. Even in that model, the consultants are suggesting that the costs are quite a bit higher than what you're paying today. And so there's a question about how interested in this option are you, number one, because additional work would be required. Number two, it's not clear that all four agencies would offer us that service. I'm guessing some may and some may not. And then again, you know, is it really financially viable? Those, I think, are the questions.
I mean, for myself, and again, I appreciate Mr. Klein's comments, standalone doesn't work. I agree with you. It doesn't work. But as Mr. Moore described it, and it was described on the screen, it's a little bit of a hybrid. And I'm thinking if somebody wants to, you know, if somebody wants to make an offer, maybe it is too expensive, but at least we get another, it's another option. And to me, I always like options, the more the merrier. And again, you keep saying four. I keep hoping for more. You never know. You know, there might be more than that. Not to correct you, but I know there's only four out here, maybe, perhaps, and four that seems like is logical, but who knows who might come up.
Well, no, and I would agree with you, Councilmember Griselli. I'm sure you remember last time, we invited three and we got four. So exactly right. We can invite four and get five.
So I would still stick, I would like to have my original, I'll stick to my original motion, but only because the more options, the better.
So, Mr. Klein, would you like to make any adjustments based on that discussion?
If we're not worried about the more work, and that's fine. I mean, I just thought it would be pointed out that it's 99% sure it's going to be way more expensive than what we have now. So I'll remove the motion.
You'll remove it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Withdraw that?
I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
So we're back to the original motion, as is. And we had a first and a second here, right?
First for me and a second for Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Grokot, please.
Councilmember Ramad, Councilmember Griselli.
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot.
I would first like to read a statement, since you didn't give us any, I didn't get a chance anyways for discussion down here.
Can you vote? And if you read your statement after, it'd be fine. It's not going to, we're voting. Would you like to vote? We had discussion, so would you vote?
No, you did not do any discussion.
We had discussion. Would you vote? And then you could, I'll let you talk after.
It's worthless, Randy. Thanks very much. No.
Would you like to vote, or withdraw, or leave? Whatever you want to do, Mr. Grokot.
My vote is no.
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes. Mr. Grokot, please. Comments?
It's not worth it. Thanks very much. Bye.
Thank you. Moving on to 3C. This is an update on dissolution process for the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. Mr. Moore. And by the way, this is the last item on this evening's agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Moore, through the chair, with the record show that one of our council members left the dais, so just that I'm sure everyone understands. And apparently, he's not coming back.
Mr. Mayor, call for a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Five-minute recess.